At this time, I'll call our September Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And at this time, we'll have our invocation and our pledge. The invocation will be by our Vice Chairman Langley, and the pledge will be led by Commissioner Randy Walker. Please rise.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we are grateful and thankful that you have allowed us to assemble on another month. And Father, now, we ask for your wisdom and inciting the governance of your people. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
At this time, I'll ask to make sure that your phone is in the mute mode or either cut completely off. For the newcomers, the fine is $25, or 50, depending on if you don't cut it off real quick. Item number C is Conflict of Interest Disclosure. At this time, I'll ask if any one of the Commissioners has a conflict. See and hear none, we'll move to item D, the approval of the agenda. Got a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second? We have a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. First one is Items for Presentation, our Service Award. And Dolores, if you will come up.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We have two Beaufort County employees here tonight that are going to receive their awards for service to Beaufort County. Constance Grady with our Water and Finance Department is receiving her five-year award. Constance. And next, we have Ms. Nanny Willis from the Department of Social Services, and she's We also have some other Beaufort County employees I'd like to recognize tonight, receiving awards, but they could not be here tonight. Patrick Bowens from the Water Department has five years in now. Ms. Keisha Clark with Social Services has five years of service. Ms. Christina Martinez, also with Social Services, has five years of service. And Ms. Doris Alligood with the Health Department has 25 years of service.
Thank you very much, Dolores. Item number F, Public Comments. The first one is Kirk, and I'll remind each one of you, you have three minutes, and I will call time if you, once you get to three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, thanks so much. I'll be brief, hopefully less than a minute. I just wanted to come tonight and invite the Commissioners to an event in October, October 13th, at 6:30 PM. We will give an update to our community in Aurora on the progress that we've made with our strategic plan. We will have government representatives, business leaders, and educators there to give some updates on those key tasks and progresses that we made to date. Mayor Williams is unable to be here tonight, but he extends his greetings to the entire council, and we will hold another meeting at the town level tonight to talk through some of those strategic updates. We are making some modest, but encouraging progress on the south side of the Pamlico, particularly in Aurora and Richland Township. We've established a viable Chamber of Commerce that had been defunct for a number of years and are starting to take membership. We've opened two new businesses on Main Street, and that's a pretty seismic move for a town that had zero businesses on Main Street six months ago. We're starting to see some investment, some folks' businesses taking risk in our town and coming to our town to open commerce. We've established two new festivals. The next one will be in October, October 21st and 22nd, called the Aurora Fish and Farm Festival, where we'll celebrate our fishers, our fishing industry, and our farmers that provide so much to our community on the south side of the river. And then, we will do our Christmas in Aurora in the first week of December, where we have a great Christmas festival, tree lighting, and a really wonderful parade, and we invite you all to come and join us for that. We are starting to see other prospectus investors starting to point to Aurora and Richland Township. As you know, Beaufort County Community College recently received a $1.5 million investment to build a workforce development center in our town to help with the development or the education and training of folks in our community, particularly associated with nutrient and the mining operation. We also, with some help from the Mideast Commission, particularly Jamie, secured over $300,000 in resiliency grants, so it will help us become a more weather-resilient community in the future, and we look forward to the outcomes of those studies. And then, lastly, we just have so much more to do, but we need your support, we need your encouragement, we need your advocacy as we try to revitalize the community that has been frankly devastated over 40 years of economic decline. So, I thank you, Chairman, and everyone, and again, we, our community is open to the entire Commissioners to come and visit us. Thank you.
What time is the strategic plan?
It'll be at 6:30. I've left invitations with Ms. Moser to provide to each one of you on the council, so.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Tandy.
Thank you for letting me be here today. Katie, should I give you a handout? Apparently, y'all don't allow slide presentations. I would hope in the future you may be changed that ruling. While on vacation, I had the opportunity to go to the Swain County Trash Facility. You know, people, you know, that's a great vacation spot, right? So, you go to the dump, and I was very happy to see what they had there. They were very proud of their facility. People were happy to work there and things that they'd done. So, on the first page of the little handout, it's just overhead of the trash collection place. One of the things that they did is they've got four dumpsters that are ground level when you show up. They said they wished they had put five in. The other thing that they did recently was they put cement on the whole place. They said that makes things a whole lot easier. You see the entrance with all of them, and you just drive up to it and throw your trash in it and drive off. It was real easy. They had ground-level dumpsters, which, you know, we've got some of our facilities that you have to crawl upstairs to get to them, and they're not very helpful. Bulk items, they had a dumpster sitting there for you to put recliners and beds and things like that in. And they also had one just for mattresses. I don't understand why they would separate that out, but they did. Electronics, they had a dumpster just for electronics, and at their facility, if you dumped a TV or a computer, you had to pay $5 to the person working the gate. I know that we do not charge that here, but we are charged by somebody that comes to pick up the TVs. So, they get $5, and then they sell the TV. So, they're trying to pay for their facility through their recycling program. $5 fee for each thing dropped off. Used oil, had a place where you could dump your used oil. I drive a back road going to my mom's house, and the guy dumps off his used oil in the ditch. So, this will be something that will be very beneficial for us also. Then, they had segregated recycling, metal, cardboard, the different colored glasses. They had all these little bins, and they were all very easy to get to, and you just drove up to them and throw your stuff in. It was very, very, very helpful and easy. They had a place for small pieces of metal. The larger items, they wanted you to take over to their bulk site. And the bulk site was actually right behind here, and I'll show you a picture in a minute. But here's a picture of the glass recycling and things, cardboard. They sold their glass and their cardboard and the TVs to somebody. One of the other things that they also did was they took in refrigerators and air conditioners, and somebody recovered the refrigerant out of it, and then they crushed it up and sold it as scrap metal. And the bulk site, like I say, was right behind it. They had places you drive up, and it's just like we're talking about. You pull up, you gotta get weighed, and you're gonna pay for it, but it was very convenient, very clean facility. Like I say, the people are very proud of it, and that's something that as we go forward at the possible mega sites, we need to look at. The only thing they said they would have done was they would have put fence up earlier, they would have put cement floors up earlier, and they would have put five dumpsters in instead of the four that they got. So, that's my presentation. I appreciate it. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you very much. Tandy. Next is Scott.
Thank you, Commissioners. I was waiting for a document to come in on my electronic device, but at this time, I'm not prepared to make the full announcement. So, if you'll allow me to excuse myself to another meeting.
Okay. Sure will. Sure will. Thanks. Next is our legislative updates, and I do not see either one of our Representatives Item number H, Items for Consent. I'll entertain a motion, well, I'm sorry, I'll entertain having one pulled for further discussion if there is.
Chairman, I'd like to pull item number two, NC Resilient Coastal Communities for Further Discussion.
Okay. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. I will put it when Anita, that's, yeah. Anita handles that.
What about opposed?
Okay, I'm sorry. All those opposed? Okay, we're down to item number I, Public Hearing, and item for Discussion. Jamie, need a motion to go into our public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion to go in?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, Jamie. Put it under Anita. Good evening.
Good evening. So, this is a public hearing to solicit comments on Beaufort County submitting a public beach and coastal waterfront access grant application to the North Carolina Division of Coastal Management. The application would be for site improvements to the 5.9-acre county-owned site on Wrights Creek located on Wilkins Road, south of Bellhaven in the Pamlico Beach area. The county intends to develop the site as a public park. Site improvements included in the public beach and coastal waterfront access grant application would include upgrading the entrance driveway, constructing accessible walking trails, a boardwalk with gazebo, and a living shoreline demonstration site. The total grant agency request would be $405,000 with a 25% local cash match of $135,000 required for a total project cost of $540,000. The county's currently funded Partif grant for the Wrights Creek site will partially offset that required cash match. It is anticipated that if the DCM grant is awarded, it, along with the Partif grant, will allow the project to be completed as originally designed, and the Commissioners will be taking public comments on Beaufort County's submittal of this public beach and coastal waterfront access grant application.
Any questions at this time, Jamie? We did not have anyone to sign up for public comment, but if there's anyone here that would like to address the Commissioners at this time, we entertain that. Okay, see and none, I need a motion to come out of the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion to come out, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, now, Jamie, I'm assuming you're asking us to approve the grant writing service contract. Is that correct, Katie?
That's correct. Just to approve submitting the grant application and then approve for Mideast to do the grant writing services, which we've attached a proposed contract for you in the amount of $2,500 to complete that grant application.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second to approve. Any questions, comments?
I have comments. I'm not gonna vote for this. This is another government boondoggle. County paid $400,000 for about 10 or 12 acres of land at Wrights Creek, almost $40,000 an acre. It was a boondoggle price to pay for the property. At the time the county bought the property, they were informed that the dyke for the dredge spoils, what they bought was a dredge pond, that the dyke was failing and was at great risk. County Commissioners went ahead and voted for it anyway, and this has become one of those things that's gonna just keep bleeding money out of the county. We need to get out of this thing, so I'm not voting for it.
Any other comment?
I have a question. The core of where this money's coming from, is it coming from the federal government or is it coming from the state government?
I know it's the NC Division of Coastal Management. I would have to check to see if there's any federal funding involved. I'm not positive on whether it's all state or if there's some federal, because I know it's through a state agency, but sometimes they're using federal money, but I could check on that. I just don't know offhand.
Could you better explain how we would, we have a match, but then again, it's not a match?
Well, there is a $135,000 cash match required because that's 25% of the project cost, but the DCM, the grant agency staff contacted us and told us that part of the Partif grant that you guys have, but not all of it, could be used to offset that cash match. They're going to count some of that as the match, so we're working with them right now to try to determine how much of that can be counted so that the county's match can be as low as possible, but I don't have an exact number for how much it will be offset at this moment.
We could use some of it for this, or we could use some of that grant that we already have for something else, I think.
Well, the grant you already have, you've put up some cash match for that grant, and they're going to also allow that Partif grant to count to offset the cash match for this grant.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments?
If this goes as well as you'd hoped, in terms of the match, what would we end up having to come up with with cash?
I'm not sure exactly how much it will offset it at this, at this time, but at best case, best-case scenario, the cash match could go like as low as $65,000, $70,000, but that would be like best-case scenario. I'm not like totally sure if it will get down to that or not. We're trying to work to get it, to get as much of it to count as we can, but they only count certain elements of it because this one is more focused on the waterfront aspect, whereas the Partif is focused on recreation in general. So, they're counting some of the things, but not everything, as a cash match.
Brian?
Yes, sir. So, the desire to go after the Division of Coastal Management Public Access Grant was that you got a Partif grant to complete some of the remaining project. We were told we could go back and submit for another Partif grant, but Partif grants are 50% match. So, we thought it best if we could get DCM funding where it was only a 25% match, and then they've allowed us to use some of the Partif money to match against that. So, if you're going to complete this project, we think this is the most economical and cost-effective manner of doing it by using granting funds.
Anyone else? Just for the record, before I was a Commissioner in 2014, the previous Commissioners, with the recommendation from the County Manager and the Chief Financial Officer, the property was appraised, the entire property, which we kind of refer to as Phase 1 and Phase 2, and because of the amount of grant money to do the initial part, the old Hopkins Seafood Processing Plant was torn down first, and that's where the Wildlife Ramp is located. So, this is the second phase. But all of the purchase price was based on the appraised value for the entire tract prior to 2014. I can't remember what year that was. So, okay, all those in favor of the contract and applying for the grant, please raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Thank you.
The next item is U.S. Motto Signs, and we're happy tonight to have Mr. Rick Lanier. Rick is Vice Chairman of the U.S. Motto Action Committee, and he's gonna give us a presentation at this time. Welcome, Rick.
Thank you. Honorable Chairman and Commissioners, my pleasure to come before you tonight. This is an invitation to join the growing list of cities and counties that are voting yes to proudly and promptly display our national motto, "In God We Trust," in and on their governmental buildings, and in many cases, their law enforcement vehicles as well. My name is Rick Lanier, and I'm co-founder and Field Director of the U.S. Motto Action Committee. I served as County Commissioner in Davidson County in Lexington, North Carolina, from 1998 to 2002. In 2002, I led my Board of Commissioners to vote yes to display "In God We Trust" on the Davidson County Governmental Center exterior. Soon after that, several other surrounding cities and counties began to join us in doing the same. We formed the U.S. Motto Action Committee for a sole purpose, to promote patriotism by encouraging elected officials such as you to vote yes to display "In God We Trust" in and on their governmental buildings. Displaying the motto gives ceremonial honor to public occasions and expresses confidence in our society. These words have been used on our U.S. currency since 1864, and this inspiring slogan is engraved above the entrance of the U.S. Senate Chamber, as well as above the Speaker's seat in the U.S. House of Representatives. And I might add, we're working toward it, and I'm garnering a lot of support now, maybe next year going before the North Carolina General Assembly to do the same. On July 30th, 1956, during the Dwight D. Eisenhower administration, the U.S. Congress adopted "In God We Trust" as our official national motto of the United States of America. Thus, displaying our motto is a legal right protected by our First Amendment. On November 1st, 2011, the U.S. House of Representatives voted overwhelmingly, 396 to 9, to reaffirm "In God We Trust" as our nation's motto. Congressman Randy Forbes of Virginia sponsored the resolution in part because some have mistakenly stated that "E Pluribus Unum" is our national motto. Most importantly, the resolution specifically encourages placement of the motto in and on all governmental buildings, from courthouses to school classrooms. A recent survey shows that 87% of all Americans still support the display of our national motto. This is our nation's identity, and rightly so. It's the very basis for our form of government. John F. Kennedy stated, "The guiding principle and prayer of this nation has been, is now, and shall ever, forever be, 'In God We Trust.'" In times of both war and peace, these words have been a profound source of strength and guidance to many generations of Americans. As a grassroots patriotic movement, the U.S. Motto Action Committee stands on solid legal ground. Since Davidson County, North Carolina paved the way, not one legal challenge has been raised against any city or county that have voted yes. And so far, 65 counties prior to you folks have voted yes to display the motto, and 51 town halls, 116 government entities, with nearly 300 displays of such. This effort is totally legal. There's nothing to challenge. 100% of the cost, this is, this is, this is the shine or glimmer of the whole thing. I've sat where you sat. I just heard, even with a grant, a potential cost of $60,000. But guess what? This will not cost you anything. It's paid for by the U.S. Motto Action Committee, and those funds, you say, where'd they come from? A lot of cases come from your local citizens that are behind what we're proposing to do, and they get behind it and donate money. Wow, and I always say this with a chuckle, while I will not take a penny from a government body, I will take donations from government officials. But we, this is zero cost to you folks. All across our country, elected officials such as you are embracing an opportunity to display our great national motto. And I can't think of a better time in our nation than now to do this. We're in, we're in a situation in our country where there has been and still is some division. Some people might say, well, this is a divisive thing. I want to point out to you tonight, this is the basis by which our country was founded on. 66% of our nation's laws came from God's Word. The other 34% were greatly influenced by it. "In God We Trust," I'm not gonna make bones about it. It is a historic comment by virtue of the fact that it was adopted by the U.S. Congress, but this, this represents who we are as a nation, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Displaying our motto will be a perpetual reminder, gentlemen, of our godly heritage as a country. Elected officials like you are showing a commitment to the values that our great country was founded on. Is our country perfect? Not by a long shot, but that we're still the greatest nation on earth, and that's because of who we are. And I want to thank you in advance for your yes vote, and as you can tell, I'm very passionate about this, and I'll be glad to entertain any questions that you might have at this time. And I do have in my briefcase some actual letters of what the type letter that we use in and on the buildings, if you'd like to see them, as well as...
Any questions of Rick?
Yeah, Rick, I'd like to see some of your examples, if you've got those.
Examples are in the book.
Well.
That were presented to us.
I'll pass the surround if I may approach.
Yes.
And that's, that's, that is one of the proposals on the exterior of the courthouse, and that's about the size we're going on. It'd be a little larger letter, maybe than this on the front. This is inside. It's more of an acrylic type letter, good quality, and it's a heathen mount. These things, they drill into the side, I'll move back over here where you can hear, everybody can hear it better. The anodized aluminum letters are drilled into the masonry and silicon, and we have never had a hitch in 116 government entities with nearly 300 displays of any kind of damage to any structure, and we put it on some very historic buildings. One is on the front of our brochure, if you saw that in your, in your email package over in Caswell County, in an art shape. And, but, these, if you know anything about anodized aluminum, it's baked on a letter, the paint, the color is baked on, and of course, if you look it up on Google... on, and of course, if you look it up on Google, they say second only, the diamonds and strength and durability. We use nothing but the best quality material. These come from Gemini, which most people in the sign business know very well, are good quality material.
Commissioner Booth.
You stated on your government buildings in the presentation in our book, it said on the courthouse or building you desire.
Yes.
But you said government buildings in your presentation. Clear that up for me.
Government buildings? Well, we've had folks from fire departments to veterans memorials, various ones. I'm thinking of Person County right now. They decided to put on the veterans memorial. Our focus is on, when I say government buildings, such as local government courthouses, governmental centers, inside chambers, you know...
That's what I saw in you. You asked my question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Does a move?
Okay, we got a motion.
Let me ask a question before you get too deep into this. Were you talking about option one and option two?
Either one.
Either one. I'd almost be willing to pay to get both of them.
Okay. As you're talking about option one, option two, in both locations, in the chambers and there, so it'd go up here and here, and then lower on the front wall of the courthouse, and then between the windows.
Well, we don't need it twice in here.
What I'm talking about is the two examples that are in the book. One of them would be right across here on the front of this, and the other would be eye level on the front of the courthouse.
May I approach?
So you're talking about options? Both of them?
I'm talking about both of them.
Both locations, both locations.
Now, your suggestion on front of the desk here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it's proposed in gold, but you can decide the color and the size if you want.
I think gold goes well with this.
And then here, you've got this here, and it might... It's yours choice. It might be a little busy right there, but up here...
What I said was eye level, and the reason for eye level is everybody comes into the courthouse for a criminal trial, has to walk by.
Right, right, exactly.
Yeah. He's not gonna see it if you put it over his head.
Yeah. That's true.
Okay, we got a motion. Did we get a second?
We got a second.
Okay. And we got a second. Further discussion?
Well, I think the motion's been revised to include option two in both cases, both locations.
Can we, instead of calling option one and option two, say, on the exterior of the courthouse and inside?
One and two are on the exterior.
Well, number one, though, number one is inside here.
It's in between the columns.
No, okay, I see what you're talking about. Option one, now, thank you very much. No, I'm talking about option two and eye level and inside the chambers up here.
That'd be option two on both locations.
Option two on both locations.
So I'm understanding you'll put up one yourself, but we're paying for the second one? What is it called? Oh, no?
We, before we even order the letters, we pay for the letters, have them shipped to the county, and once the both sets arrive here, we have an organization or a company that we've used quite a bit to come install the letters. We will mail the check made out to the signed company, but we'll send it to your county manager or your county clerk, and once they've been installed to your satisfaction, she's free to hand the check to the signed company. We just don't want... I've been in business since I was 27 years old, and I'll be 70 in November, and I just don't like paying for stuff till it's done to satisfaction. And that's the only thing that I ask you guys to do, is just hold the check and hand it to them when it's done. But it will not cost you all one penny. And I want to point out to you, too, and not for any accolades, I believe in this so strongly. I pay for my own motel expense, my own food, my own gas, and I've done this from the very inception. And I believe so strongly that the need for this across our state and our nation... I can't reach... I'm kinda like the little boy that his grandpa took him on the beach. You being here on the coast, you appreciate this. Grandpa was picking up sand dollars, throwing them in the ocean, and he said, "Grandpa, what are you doing?" He said, "You can't save all of them." Picked up and then said, "I just saved one more." I can't reach them all, but I can reach, hopefully try to reach, the state of North Carolina, as long as God gives me breath. And that's my hopes.
Rick, I remember talking to you about 10 years ago, and I appreciate you coming back, visiting with us, and I'm glad you've had a successful event here tonight because you're doing us a great service, and you're doing the people of Beaufort County a great service as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Rick, can you email me once you know what the cost is?
Absolutely.
You're gonna pay for one?
No, I'm gonna pay for both of them.
You're gonna pay for both?
Oh, yes, yes. Let me reiterate that. We raise the funds. We don't have endless supply at our general fund. We raise money, and that's the reason I said earlier. We won't take it from the county, because county coffers, because we don't never want it to be said that you use our tax dollars to pay for this. But any commissioner that wants to donate, we're welcome for your donation. In fact, I do have a fundraising letter, if you don't mind me sending it to your clerk to reach out to the local community, because I think it's a... When you make it a community effort, and they have an opportunity, if they don't have an opportunity and they know that opportunity could possibly avail to them, they may be angry that they didn't get a chance to be a part of it. Because I have had tremendous success. I've just shared somebody earlier, it was down in Duplin County, and they decided, for a first, to put it on their airport and a couple places there inside the building, on the exterior, and on both entrances of the courthouse and inside the chambers, about five locations. So the cost's gonna be about $6,500, while one business sending a check for $4,200. So, folks, we'll get behind it.
I'll challenge the other commissioners to match mine.
Okay.
Okay, we've not voted, have we? Okay. We're down to the point. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Commissioners.
Have an enjoyable evening, and I challenge you to go to Bath before you leave in the morning.
I'm gonna try to do that. If my wife's back, we'll hold up. I shared with you earlier, she has a lot of issues.
Those drums, you catch those better, I understand, late in the afternoon, and maybe even after dark.
I'm going to Currituck County in October, and that's close to Chesapeake Bay, where I caught that 80-pound black drum. So I'm gonna try to hit that area, too, but we're heading down to Southport, gonna do a little fishing the next couple days.
Once again, thank you very much for coming, Rick.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we're down to item number K. Items for decision, Mideast Commission. Lisa?
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here tonight. Beaufort County has applied for the Essential Single Family Residential Loan Program, and two things that have to be done to complete that application are the adoption of the two policies that you have in front of you. One of those policies is the procurement-disbursement policy, and the other is the assistance policy. They're pretty standard policies. The procurement policy mirrors almost identically the Beaufort County procurement policy they already have. And if you aren't familiar with this program, they are designed for low to moderate income seniors. It's an attempt to help seniors make repairs to their house. Up to $40,000 is a forgivable grant. For every year they stay in the house, they get $8,000 of their amount taken away, and so eventually, they owe nothing. And it's an attempt to help them stay in their homes and make repairs. And most of the repairs are weather-related, weather-related roofs, HVAC, things of that nature, ingress egress, things just to help them stay in their homes. First of all, we will do three houses. Once we've gotten this approved and we have the grant agreement in place, we will take applications, and we will start with three homes. The important dates to kind of remember how this program's gonna sort of play out are that the applications will be available to the public starting September 30th. They will have until December 31st to get those in. January 31st, the selection of the units will be made. The work will start, be in a contract, by December 31st of 2024, and it will be completed by June 15th of 2025. Now, after the first initial three, once we complete those, then we will have the option of receiving more funds for more units. So I'm asking you for a motion to approve these two policies so that I can get those into NC Housing and get this finished.
Yes, Commissioner Booth. Turn your mic.
I've heard you correctly, your application date is the end of this month. Then your approval date is probably 90 days later. But the completion date was 2025.
Well, that's for everything on the...
Is that just those three houses?
No.
Or the whole project?
That's for the whole project. That's for the whole project.
Will I make the motion that we approve these projects?
We're actually being asked to approve...
One and two.
The policies, the procurement policy and the assistance policy.
And a budget amendment.
Well, yes, and in your packet, you have a copy of the project ordinance and the grant agreement.
I do... Can we take all three? Okay. All right. Commissioner Rebaughn.
On page, what is it, 165, under your priority ranking system?
Mm-hmm.
You've got the highest ranking by double, going to somebody that's in threat of imminent eviction. Now, how does the grant help them not be evicted? I mean, are we gonna fix up the home and say that they're gonna be evicted and somebody else gets it?
Honestly, Commissioner Rebaughn, I don't know why that line is in there, because you have to own the home to be able to qualify for this. So I saw that as well, but if you read further into it, you have to own the home.
Right.
You have to have clear title to the home. It can't be a life estate. It can't be... So I don't know why it says that, but the ranking would not include... Because first of all, when I take the applications, if you don't own the home, then you're not gonna qualify anyway.
Okay. And I take it Mideast is managing this whole process?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that under our normal contract with you, or is there additional fee?
We already have a contract for this program.
Lisa, I'm assuming that that could also mean if a lender is trying to evict. In other words, they own the home?
Correct, yes, yes, correct. That's correct. And we have had that happen. I mean, we have had people who have put in an application, and before we could bring it all the way to fruition, they have ended up in bankruptcy, for example. And in those cases, we've had to pull them out, or some of them had to pull out of the program. So yes, I guess it could mean that. You're correct.
Is this the one where the minimum is $5,000? Now, would you...
Yes, yes.
You'll do a minimum job of $5,000?
Yes, yes, sir. It's a minimum of $5,000 in repairs.
Did you get your question? I'm sorry, John. Other questions?
Was there a second?
A second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the three items, which is two of them are policies, and then the budget amendment, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
I believe this is the first time you've been in here to visit with us since you've got your new job.
I'm so...
Yeah, yeah.
Good seeing you.
Come back more often.
Thank you.
The next item is economic development. We're gonna get an update from our new economic developer, and when I say new, I believe, Brad, you've been on the job 90 days?
Yes, sir.
So you're gonna give us good news.
I will, yes, sir.
Great. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Waters, and thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to appear before you today on just over my 90-day mark here with Beaufort County. Very excited to give you an update of some of the things we've been working on, and hope to have many more projects here in the future with you in closed session. But for you and the general public today, just wanted to talk a little bit about things I've been working on. So first off, initially, getting updated on just kind of the administrative tasks associated with the position, meeting with County Manager Allie Good and Susan Squires, the Economic Development Specialist, kind of reviewing the department documents and programs and files, as well as evaluating the budget for the program. Then, general responsibilities as a department head, you know, IT and purchasing, and that's time sheets and that sort of thing. From there, really getting into the heart of the day-to-day activities of economic development. It starts and ends with business, existing industry, business retention and expansion. That's where you see probably about 75% to 80% of the new jobs created in economic development come from your existing industries. So we are certainly putting a focus on that, and we've been able to have meetings and go out for visits with eight different of our existing companies so far. Nutrien being at the top of that list, MJM Yachts, Pamlico Yacht Works, VT Hackney, IDX, Iconic Marine Group, Camful, Mann &amp; Hummel, and Tar River Industrial. We have several more in the works lining up. Now that the COVID restrictions are lightening up, we're able to better get out there and visit and see the companies. And I always like to do that onsite, be able to go out and actually see the products that are being made and the process and the facilities that we have here in Beaufort County. On the recruitment front, we are working since April, and since I've started, we've had about 15 requests for information. These are primarily projects that are looking at our region or the state through the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina. Those we have submitted primarily have been the Chaco Innity Industrial Park, and that's because right now, the trend that we're seeing is for larger projects, larger tracts of land, primarily supply chain in the automotive sector around the electric vehicles and the battery plants. If you know, North Carolina's had a couple good successes, and so with those big announcements, the supply chain, smaller companies that feed those manufacturing plants are looking for locations in the state. So we've been submitting the Chaco Innity Industrial Park, as well as the Washington-Beaufort Industrial Park as well. We're actively engaged with three different building searches. We assist in clients that call us and say, you know, either existing companies or new clients or companies, we don't even know they're intermediary, looking for them a new building, and so we're actively looking for several buildings in the 5,000 to 25,000 square foot range. That's sized buildings we definitely would like to have more of in the county. We have three active expansion projects and a recruitment project that we're working. One just last week that came about is a visit from Economic Development Partnership. I'll go into a little more detail in a second. Sites and buildings is key. That's really what we're here to do, is market sites and buildings for industrial clients. The saying is, you can't sell from an empty cart, and you really, without the product, which is the sites and buildings, you won't have any projects, which is the investment and jobs that are created by the companies that would locate here in Beaufort County. So primarily, right now, we're marketing the Washington-Beaufort County Industrial Park and the Chaco Innity Industrial Park. Washington-Beaufort County Industrial Park's kind of our most ready-to-go product that we're marketing. As you know, it has the location of the... As you know, it's the, has the location of the Beaufort County Skill Center, which is where our office is located, Beaufort County Economic Development, the Committee of 100, and is currently the home for the Beaufort County Community College Boat Building Program. Six other industries call the Washington-Beaufort County Industrial Park Home. That site is great because it has public ownership. It is a certified site through the Electric Cities Smart Site Program, which means that it's, has all of the due diligence required that companies are looking for, understanding the environmental and the single ownership, a set price, all of the different documentation that companies would need to have in hand for them to start building quickly. That site, it has full utilities and then right now, we've got about 45 acres remaining out that site. The sites in that park are on the smaller side, about five to seven acre range, which really is good for our sweet spot here in Beaufort County. And of course, some of those sites could be combined for larger projects if they have an interest. The Chaco Innity Industrial Park as well, publicly owned, 246 acres total, 186 acres of those are developable. That site was certified in 2014 under the Duke Site Energy Site Readiness Program, which is similar to the Smart Site Program, that it shows that it has the full utilities, all the due diligence studies, some additional layout maps that would make it more marketable for clients as they look at those sites. That site is larger, it's got larger tracts, five to 67 acre parcels. That one's great because it's on Highway 17, which is a major north-south route that bisects the county, that has had some widensings done and the Beaufort County section is, has been widened. The key selling point for that one also is that it has a Norfolk Southern Rail Line that bisects the property, which makes it very marketable and appealing, especially some of those larger scale projects that are looking at the state of North Carolina. New product that we're working on, in conjunction, actually, this is a Town of Aurora-led project that we are supporting, is the creation of a new industrial park in the Town of Aurora. We are hosting meetings every two weeks, coordinating with the application for a North Carolina Department of Commerce Utility Fund Grant and Golden Leaf Grant that had been applied for back in 2019 before COVID. So there has been some delays with that project and now everything's getting back on track and everything's ready to move forward. Actually, the construction bids are out and should be back mid-September for that. And we are looking on coordinating with those funding agencies for those next steps and getting that park under construction. That one really is smaller parcels. You're looking at one to two acre parcels really as a great opportunity is to support those contractors and vendors that work at the Nutrien Mine, to allow them a spot to work off of the Nutrien Campus and to create jobs and investment there for the Town of Aurora. We also are learning more about the airport industrial park plans that have been developed. I've met with Earl Malpus as well as Jonathan Russell, discussed those plans for the Washington Warren Airport, that everybody had heard about, the $20 million of investment funds that have been coming from the General Assembly. Most of that is for airport improvement and modernization, but there are some funds and projects that we will support directly with a, the 95-acre industrial park. That one is very keen because that, those grant funds will create for the acquisition of the land, which has already been, I believe, completed through the City of Washington, road development, utility infrastructure, and a possible speculative shell building for that location. So we are certainly anxious to, for that project to come online so we could begin to market that. The unique aspect of that particular product is that it has access for aeronautical type developments that would may need access to the airport and the runway, as well as land for marine and advanced manufacturing industrial uses at the rear of that facility. So we've been supporting the airport's efforts to develop that and have actually been involved with, working with the drone company that has been announced recently. Available buildings is another key thing we're looking for. We're always on the lookout for a building that may come online. We're working, looking at commercial brokers, evaluating what may be on the market. 75% of the projects that look at new company expansions or begin their search looking for an existing building. That's so companies can save money and time by locating in existing buildings and then get up to speed a little bit faster and adapt their, that building for their specific needs. Having available buildings in your community attracts clients to the community and they can evaluate the workforce and the quality of life and the tax environment and the utilities for their particular project. We've had some preliminary discussions with the Committee of 100, as well as private developers who may have an interest in possibly doing a speculative shell building in the future. Right now is a little bit of a challenge with the economy the way it is, but we feel like that's a strong project for us in the future to address. Another area we've really spent some resources on is workforce development, making sure that there's a steady pipeline of workers coming from the school system and citizens of Beaufort County to feed the industries that we have here. A lot of the companies are experiencing challenges with workforce and pending retirements from, they call it the silver tsunami of folks that are eligible to retire. And so we're wanting to work with them as closely as we can to assist, make sure they'll have the workers they need to be successful here in Beaufort County. We are, it kind of went silent during COVID because we couldn't visit really together, but we are reestablishing the workforce development team with Rivers East Workforce Development Board, NC Works Career Center, Beaufort County Community College, and Beaufort County Schools. We've had a couple of meetings so far with Sarah Watson, who's with the Community College Director of Customized Training and Apprenticeships, as well as Vicky Hamel, who's the Beaufort County Public Schools Career and Technical Education Director. We're also expanding that group so that we can start getting together on a regular basis, have a unified approach and coordination when we're talking with companies and all of the training programs that are available for high school students, adult learners, to get connected with the training and the jobs they need for career opportunities right here in Beaufort County. We also have, working to re-energize with the Rivers East Workforce Development Board have received a Golden Leaf Grant for a regional advanced manufacturing pipeline initiative that's a six-county regional effort to expose teachers to the modern manufacturing workplace and understand the training and opportunities that are available here locally at the Beaufort County Community College. Economic development is a team sport and so I'm new to the community, so I've been trying to get out as much as I can and would love, and need to do more and love to do more with different members of the community and organizations that'll help support economic development here. We've had over nearly 20 meetings so far, different meetings with individuals, learning about initiatives that they have going on and how we can support each other. Just to touch on a few, the city of, the cities of Washington, the Town of Bellhaven, Town of Aurora, Bath are some of the communities we've met with, partners such as the Washington-Beaufort County Chamber of Commerce, the Norfolk Southern Railway, of course, the Beaufort County Committee of 100, Economic Development Partnership, Electric Cities, East Carolina University, and Beaufort County Community College are some of the important meetings we've had. Some of the joint things that, the other initiatives that I've been working on, my team has been working on, we have been invited to a monthly meeting, a breakfast meeting with the economic developers for Pitt and Martin Counties, so we can coordinate on a county level, what they're working on, what we're working on, how we can work together to leverage the assets of our region. We also are, under the leadership of Catherine Glover, reestablishing the economic, an Economic Development Partners Meeting that is so far going to include the Beaufort County Manager, myself, the City of Washington's Manager, the Tourism Agency, and the Downtown Development Agency for Washington, as well as Beaufort Community College. And we're looking to expand that group and meet monthly to share information and resources and work together. I've been accepted into the Leadership Beaufort Program with the Chamber of Commerce, that'll begin September 20th, and wanted to close on the fact that we were able to, well, two things. One, we have engaged with Zachary Allen, who's the Lead for America through AmeriCorps Fellow, who's going to be working with us for the next year. That's in coordination with the City of Washington and he's going to be helping us out for the next year, working on economic development projects that support the growth here in Beaufort County. One thing I wanted to touch on that was a great thing that we've, we're selected to participate in, the Economic Development Partnership, which is the marketing arm of the state of North Carolina for economic development, selected Beaufort County and myself to host the NC 100 Northeast Regional Event. And that's where their goal is to go out and meet every year with all 100 counties. They pick a, they break the state up into regions and for the Northeast, we were selected to be the host. We had a total, we actually held this event on Tuesday, August 30th. We had about 15 state economic developers from EDPNC come to town. That included business recruitment, business development, marketing, research, existing industry. We had two Department of Commerce reps, one that was the expert in offshore wind energy opportunities. We've had 13 county and municipal economic developers come to town. 12 of those spent the night at the Fairfield Marriott here in town. We, the format for the event, they come to town and they really want to meet with local developers to learn more about their economic development product, the sites and buildings that they're marketing, any workforce development efforts, any unique quality of life aspects, any demographics and statistics, unique value propositions of each of their counties. And so we met over the course of usually two days, we combined it into one day. We actually did it at the Beaufort County Community College Conference Center. So we were able to show off the great community college we have here, bringing in all those folks for that. And then afterwards, while they were spending the night, we had a, we arranged for a river cruise. One of the great things that makes Beaufort County unique is the water. And so we took the opportunity through the NC Estuaryum to go out for a river cruise and take all those folks from Raleigh and westward out onto the water and learn a little bit more about the quality of life and the history here of Washington. And then we had a box lunch that day from Carry Out by Chriselen, as well as dinner at the Mulberry House. And then the next day, they toured East Carolina University's Life Science and Pharmaceutical Building. So it was a great event. We actually had some sponsorships from the Beaufort County Committee of 100, Electric Cities, and Duke Energy. We were able to put a great foot forward, reestablish the close connections we're going to have with the Economic Development Partnership, as well as landed at least a lead of a project from folks. One of the military recruiters for the EDPNC had a company he was working with and when he heard that we were the air filtration capital of the world in North Carolina for certain, he connected us and we had a great conference call with that client just last week. So already good things happened about that and just wanted to thank the partners that helped put that event on, Sarah Watson, Jackie Woolard, and Tom Stroud with the Estuaryum, Mohammed Darir in Montana Lausch with the Mulberry House, as well as Sue Squires and Zachary Allen on my team that helped pull this all together. Happy to answer any questions you have. This is just a little snapshot of what we've been working on in the office here for the last 90 days.
Any questions of Brad? Got a, got a closing comment.
Yes, sir.
I was at a wedding on Saturday night with Jimmy Randolph, economic developer Lee Kenny, and he said, tell you hello.
Good, well, I appreciate it. They have a lot of good things going on in that county and we hope to do the same here in Beaufort County.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you're welcome to come back anytime.
Yes, sir.
All right, we're down to item M, the Health Department, and we've got several presentations. So I'll turn it, the first one is the Community Health Assessment. Janelle? John said to tell you, he was not leaving, he was just taking a stretch.
That's fine, I don't blame you, stand up. It's healthier to stand up, right? Good evening, hello. I'm here to do my lovely annual spill where I come to talk to you guys about the current community health of Beaufort County. Usually annually, it's the SACH report. We did do our most recent community health assessment and so I am here to review that with you. I did kind of hand out a short, I call it an infographic. It's a little bit easier to read versus a 45 community health assessment page document, so hopefully you enjoy. And had some good feedback from Claude Richardson at Board of Health, so hopefully he made it even better. So overview of our county, our population, 46,994. You'll see in the right-hand side on the screen that 72% of our population is white, 25% black, 7.8 Hispanic, and 2.2% other. Poverty was something that stuck out as well, about 19% of the population in Beaufort County lives in poverty, which is higher than the NC state rate, which was 15%. Median household income, you can see comparatively that Beaufort County, 45,212 compared to North Carolina, which is 54,602. Education was another kind of standout data point that I wanted to bring. Beaufort County, 87.7% of people 25 and older have obtained a high school degree or higher, which compared to North Carolina, we've actually improved in that, where we're a little bit closer where the state is actually 87.8. We always want it higher, but it was good since our last community health assessment to see those numbers closer together. In addition, Beaufort compared to North Carolina, we are a little bit behind in regards to the bachelor's degree and higher. You see that Beaufort County is 20.6% versus North Carolina, 31.3. Obviously, education is always important in regards to why we focus on it, it's because it's shown education, jobs tied to income, and as we reported on the other one, poverty. So it does go hand in hand. Education also ties to healthier lifestyles. High school dropout rates, you'll see there that we actually have improved. This is another number that in years past has, we were still above North Carolina, but we have dropped from 3.2 four years ago to now 1.6. Crime and safety, our incarceration rate per 100,000, we are quite above North Carolina currently 659.8 versus North Carolina, 304.2. The property crime rate, North Carolina is above Beaufort with 2,412.6 versus 2,052.8. Our child abuse was something that stuck out this year. I probably have never reported on this before and I really don't want to do it again. But child abuse and neglect reports investigated. So I do want to make clear, the investigated are those that, any report that is made, that's documented. So we had 63.7 per 1,000 population. But the substantiated, that number is those that were confirmed. And so you'll see there, North Carolina's rate for substantiated was 7.9 and Beaufort County's was 21.5. Tobacco and substance use, so 18% of adults reported current tobacco use and 30.3% of high school students reported current tobacco use. We are in constant communication with Beaufort County Schools regarding middle schoolers vaping, e-cigarettes, tobacco use, trying to really focus on education and prevention and figure out the best way to do that, to hopefully not only stop e-cigarettes and any form of tobacco use, but also the drug education as well with that kind of types. You'll see rate of drug overdose as well, Beaufort County, 25.5 compared to North Carolina's, 22.4. And then the bar graph on the right is the percent of overdose deaths caused by illicit opioids, where we are at 77.8% compared to North Carolina's 68%. Our leading causes of death, these five have more or less kind of stayed consistency since I've been with the Health Department. Usually one or two, maybe number four or five change, but heart disease, cancer, cerebrovascular disease, chronic lower respiratory diseases, and Alzheimer's are the leading causes of death for Beaufort County.
Janelle?
Yeah.
On the opioid, opioid, opioid deaths at 25% compared to 22.5%, something like that with North Carolina?
Yes.
Oh, thank you for doing that.
No problem.
Yeah, 22.4 for North Carolina. Of the opioid deaths, how many of those are classified as fentanyl?
Ooh, I do not have that number. So this, I can go, so this data here is pulled from the state and I can look to see if they break it down, but to my knowledge, I do not know any of, the number of fentanyl-related.
Thank you.
The top three identified quality of life issues that were identified was, number one, low income and poverty. So what I do want to clarify is the data that I presented on prior to was secondary data from the state and other sources, so that data came from there. The top three identified quality of life, life issues came from Beaufort County residents. So we did our community health assessment where we sent out surveys and partnered with churches and different organizations to help collect that. Of course, it was 2020, so that was really fun, but we got probably about 300 surveys. So from those responses, the top three quality of life. So from those responses, the top three quality of life issues that they determined were low income poverty, followed by drugs, alcohol and substance abuse, and then lack of affordable housing. So those were the top three. So priority areas. So to get priority areas, this is not something that the Health Department just closes our eyes and throw a dart at a board. We invited several leaders, partnerships, organizations to a prioritization meeting. We invited about 50. And from that, we presented all the data from the community health assessment and then each table had to basically prioritize. And as you know, we all have different prioritizations ourself. So versus one, you know, certain table or one person being overrun by the others, it was really a group, a group decision where it came down to, they had to make the call of what the top four priority areas were to focus for. Why these priority areas are important is because it's not just listed on a PowerPoint, but for the next years into our next community health assessment, our programs, our efforts, our education, our outreach, we really try to gear those initiatives toward those priority areas to try to move the needle as much as we can. And moving the needle is not easy in four years, but I'll take any movement we can get. Chronic disease does incorporate cancer and then also nutrition and education. Mental health does include substance abuse and behavioral health. Economy, there were several things that we broke down in that as well. And then vulnerable populations was minority as well as aging and elderly populations. So the, something new this year, so annually I present on a state of the county health report. The state has created a, what they call a scorecard. So this link here, if you were to click on it and it'll be on our website, let's see this, uh oh, go back. There we go. We're going to see if it works. But we have our programs, you know, I told you all the efforts and outreach and programs that we put into place, we want to make sure that it's, you know, moving a needle and that it's contributing to those top priority areas. So our scorecard is a way to do that. So it breaks down our partnerships with the hospital and cancer outreach. It breaks down housing and economic development. It breaks down diabetes prevention and chronic disease to kind of help show what's being done. So whether it's screenings and identification of diabetes or pre-diabetes and the internet's working very slow, that's okay. But at any point, data, anybody from the county, if they wanted to look at what we were going to be doing, majority of these are updated quarterly or even some monthly, depending on what's going on. But I challenge you guys to visit it. And if you ever have any questions or if these grants that individuals are talking about, there might be a lot of data available there to help, you know, provide that information. And also you get to kind of hold me accountable, maybe I'll forget, but accountable in regards to the programs and the updating and all that fun stuff. Do y'all have any questions?
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Did a great job. Still time for a question. All right. Let's see, who is up next? Jim?
Hope y'all are doing well. Here with, that's on the Behavioral Task Force, actually with Tiffany Moore, who is the program coordinator for the Task Force Two Health Department, Claire Harris and Anthony Tyree, who are the chair of the Behavioral Task Force Committee. So that's where the recommendation is coming from. And as the Health Department, I endorse what we're presenting on. Since we were here last month, then we gave a large presentation. I wasn't going to go into too much depth for the background. But looking at the slide up here, you can see all the members of the Behavioral Task Force. And it's key to point out that these are many of your subject matter experts when it comes to substance use and behavioral health issues in Beaufort County. And they have been working, and some of them are back there, over there, who decided to come to support the effort. They've been together for six years and they have been working on strategies for those six years. So when we start talking about some of these, the strategies that came from the state, we've already started some of those. So we're not asking to do anything with those. We're going to let those continue to go, but we're looking at how we can advance the effort. So earlier this year, the Behavioral Task Force brought in other community members, users and people that are interested in advocating for their communities to look at the recommendations. They all took RBA training so that we could all strategize. It's a process of thinking like in a group. During the strategic planning, the room started with many ideas and we put them all up on the wall. Forty people, 40 ideas, all went up there. And we realized that we weren't going to be able to tackle them all, so we decided we can break it down into what we thought was feasible, impactful and evidence-based interventions to bring as a proposal for the opioid money. So one of the first strategies is education. I like to think of when the house is flooding, the first thing you want to do is go in there and turn the water off, stop it before you start looking at the damage that's been done. So that's going to be one of our strategies, our first one. We're going to focus on the schools and the youth in the county and try to diminish the number of misusers early on. The RAND Institute concludes that school-based drug prevention is the, one of the most cost-effective tools for improving public health and for making incremental progress in the management of a drug epidemic. We plan to also focus this education on pregnant women, parents and families and try to help bring support and education to them. We want to stop experimentation with drugs and we want to stop early in the phase of use. Another area of education will be on public awareness and let people know what the issue is and then how to connect to services when they're needing it. We feel like the health education program can work with the providers, professionals, community advocates and other community health workers to create a strong network to support prevention and lower addiction. First, we're going to use the shut-off valve and then we're going to turn to mitigation. So I'm going to let Anthony talk a little bit about that.
Good evening. So part of what we're proposing here is the use of what North Carolina has began a program called Peer Support Specialists. That peer is someone who has a, has a lived experience, who has gone through training and they have received a certification to work with those who are struggling like they once were. As the definition of who is a peer that is located on the NC Certified Peer Support Specialist Program website is the, Peer Support Specialists are people living in recovery with mental illness and/or substance use disorder and who provide support to others whom can benefit from their lived experiences. The North Carolina Certified Peer Support Specialist Program provides acknowledgement that the peer has met a set of requirements necessary to provide support to individuals with mental health or substance use disorder. So what this program has done has allowed those, part of that requirement is a peer has to be in recovery for at least 12 months, active. And what takes place then is this is the individual that clinicians can't always get out of the office. A peer is a resource that can help someone who is homeless or living on the street or in usage actually connect with resources. And it's not just about connecting with one provider. That peer is someone who knows of everyone that lives within their area and is going to find the best assistance that fits that individual's need, from housing to food to just overall treatment. So what this program also does is, as many of us may know, those who have suffered substance use disorder over the years, a lot of times it's hard for them to get back into the workplace. This program, once certified, it gives you the opportunity to begin a professional career helping others. So that's, that's part of what we have proposed here.
And earlier I got a letter from a actual Peer Support Specialist that I gave y'all out because I just got it this afternoon, and from a recovering family member who's, I think it was brother, used a peer support in order to kick his addiction. So that is some stuff I brought with me as well.
So also what, what we are asking for is continued support for the Behavioral Task Force. As Jim has stated, this task force has been present for six years. I've been a part of the task force now for five of those six years. And what that task force does is it brings both our grass tops and our grassroots together to have open, honest conversation, as well as it gives us the opportunity to gather data. So as we come forward and trying to move forward the best way that we can in our county for the folks that are here, the task force actually comes together. We have been, we have been provided a grant that has allowed us to hire an outside source that actually does our data for us. So it's not just all based on the task force alone. We have others who, I believe, we started out with ECU and now we are ECU and UNC Chapel Hill as well. So what they do is they come into the county and they actually learn who's here and make contact. For instance, if someone goes through a overdose and help is called, but they are then taken out of the county to receive services, we would still know that someone was contacted or contact what was made with that person to provide them assistance through our county. So again, this, this task force is not just about searching for funds. We actually sit down and come up with what is going on, boots on the ground, as we like to say. Again, the biggest part about this task force is it's a collaborative of, again, grass tops and our grassroots org from, and we also do many public information campaigns, meaning we go to different parts of the county, not just here. And we kind of get feedback from those folks as well too, just to see what their need is, what they're seeing and how we can best help change.
And he mentioned the grant. We did already receive a grant through the Behavioral Task Force of $800,000. And we feel like this grant, this group can still bring in lots more money to address opioid addictions.
Can I ask a question? Yes, we're talking about data. Of the opioid addictions, and I'm sure some of this is heroin, how much is fentanyl? Do you know yet? You know that fentanyl is synthetic heroin, right? And what we were told by the DA when he visited with us, I think it was two months ago, that most all of heroin busts, even heroin overdoses are fentanyl now. So is there any way to discern at what point within the data, how much is fentanyl?
I think it all depends on the reporting agency because each reporting agency we gathered, oh, I'm so sorry. I said it really depends upon the reporting agency so that each agency reports that differently, how like if you go to the ER, how that gets coded. Is that a primary diagnosis or is that like comorbid? But what we do know is you're right, fentanyl is everywhere. I was just in the back and I was looking through a newsletter that talked about the fentanyl presence in even in pill mills. So like people think they're getting authentic medications, they're buying them off the street. And what they're getting is press meds that have fentanyl because it's so cheap. So a hard number, no. I wish we had like a harder number to be able to present. But, you know, in tracking that connection that we have, we also know that with that information that ECU and UNC has helped us, we're able to track the impact and change we have on a very targeted area. So just not a generalized area because we also know that certain communities in our county are harder hit than others. So that's what we're working on.
Well, I don't know if you guys are the right ones to talk to, but if you do get any data, any numbers as to how, what impact in terms of how many fentanyl cases there are relative to heroin, opioid at this time, is there any way you could get that to me specifically just to me?
I'll check it out.
Present it to the board, but if you can't, don't want to do it to the entire board, please.
No, 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 it's not that. It's just that we get reports of opioid overdose or opioids deaths. It's not like we haven't broken it down into whether it's fentanyl, heroin or Percocet or something like that. So I mean, you know, it could be any of those, but I'll try to see if I can get those numbers for you.
I mean, I don't really see you guys as an investigatory body, but a data collection body. And I'm just, if you could get that and access the data to the extent of it relative to other.
When the hospital reports, they just put opioids.
They just put, I know. And I don't know why they're not being more specific so that we'll have a better understanding of where the source of the problem is. You know, we're always talking about root problems. We've got to figure out the root of this problem is, right?
So as Claire was saying, each individual agency tests differently. So some of your smaller ones can break down. But that's also where the peer comes into play as well too, because a lot of times what we're seeing now is some do not know what they're getting. They're asking for one drug, but they don't know that it's pressed with something else. And that's where the peers can, can constantly stay in contact with them just to let them know and let us know as well too, this person is actually using this but thinking they're using this. So that kind of helps us out in that process as well too.
That's good, but I'm wondering, and I know you guys don't do it, but I'm just asking, do you know of this being done? If somebody gets busted, do they check their blood to see what the composition of drugs are, say if they have an overdose? Do they check the composition of the drugs to see what it? Because I'm sure it's very, heroin is very different than fentanyl. Synthetic's got to be very different than natural. I mean, the chemical composition's got to be different. So I'm wondering, are they getting this data? And if they are, are they, could they pass it on you? Or could you make a special request that they pass it on? Because I think all counties should get this so that we, the commissioners and the law enforcement folks that we pay for would know these.
Usually most of your drug tests are urine.
Yeah.
It's actually a byproduct, so a lot of times it's broken down at that point. But I'll look and see what I can find for you.
Thanks, James.
So the, the last part of the, is our community pilot projects. And what we're looking for is an opportunity of our community to be able to have access to funding to support very targeted pilot programs that really address to increased capacity and those that are underserved, that they're evidence-based and that we're looking at sustainability and equitable distribution of that. So if we have a church in Pintown who wants to, who has a problem and they want to be able to say, we need to help our community, that we would be able to do some pilot programs, that would certainly be tracked and so forth over that time to, you know, ensure success, where we're going with that, but really have a little bit of flexibility so that everything is not based in the town of Washington. Because that's, that's not where everybody lives in Beaufort County, where they can get to.
So those are the four strategies that we're talking about. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about the budget for y'all, but before we do that, I want to let you know that there's a couple of things to consider. One is that the funds must go towards collaboration, treatment or prevention. When we signed the MOU, we agreed to either use option A, which is 12 strategies in all, or option B, which is the collaboration effort. So we chose to go with that. And I think at the planning retreat, I went through that process with y'all then to give you an overview on why we went with option B. Second point is that the funds do not have to be spent the year they receive. So that's important because that means we can address the opioid crisis, you know, long term. We can look at it a little bit longer as we look at it and we don't have a need to try to spend it every year. The last point I wanted to make is that what we're asking for is support to use the funds for the next three years and then be able to come back to you to show you what's working and what's not working, or if we need to change the direction that we're going in. I think a lot of counties are simply saying, let's do one strategy or one intervention and then let's fund it for 18 years. But that's not the approach that we want to take. I don't believe that's the way to go. This may make it a little bit harder for us, but I think in the long run, it's going to make it a better project that we're going to do moving forward. It's a stronger option in my opinion. So you see, we've got 3,077,688 over the next 18 years. The first payment was 118,000, which we got. Soon we should be getting a second payment, which is $260,000. Then we're going to be receiving about 250,000 per year up until 2025, and then it goes down to 135 to 180 for the rest of the way through. So that's the way. So that's the way the spending is going to look. Uh, and this is the, the first three years. This is what I'm asking for y'all to approve is the first three years, you can see the, uh, per year, year one is a hundred and seventy-five thousand, a little over, and these are kind of estimates, but these are pretty close. Year two, about a hundred and three thousand, and year three is two hundred and sixty-three thousand six hundred and seven. The green shows you how much revenue is coming in from the opioid settlement during those, those years. Uh, the reason that the first two years are so much lower is because that grant I was talking about, the KB Reynolds Grant, kind of basically fund that, uh, Behavioral Task Force collaboration work for the first two years. So this is pretty much, um, the summary of what we're recommending from the Behavioral Task Force, uh, to the commissioners for approval. So are there any questions?
Go ahead.
Jim, if you've been at this for six years with this, with the task force, have you got metrics that you're using right now?
We do.
Have you got metrics that you can say is going to be, we're going to measure the next three years by?
Yes, that's the, the database that he was talking about. They call it, it's, uh, started by ECU, uh, and is moved to ECU and UNC Chapel Hill together, working on the database.
Well, that's data. I'm talking about what the metrics are to determine success and are you moving the needle?
So, so the BC Data 360, which is what ECU helped us develop, is actually, um, we can actually like navigate that data metrics for the county. So if, let's say we have a pilot project to like, it has one zip code, um, they're able to sort of help break down those different areas so we can see like on a local level. What we do know is that when we look at numbers, four or five don't seem to make, aren't, don't, aren't very large numbers, but they're very impactful in communities because that's four or five whole families that are no longer impacted. Um, so we do have some of those data metrics, um, in, in that BC Data 360 that's already been developed and has continued to be funded at that collaborative now that we've added Chapel Hill.
I think the point I'm trying to make is I don't think we want to wait until year three to the, to get the data and say, oh, it was a success.
Again, I do know some of the numbers. I'll, I'll let Anthony talk first and I'll tell you.
So if I'm hearing right, it's how do we determine an outcome that's a successful outcome?
Correct.
Right? So.
And the metrics you're using.
Right. So unfortunately with, with the life of substance use disorder and mental health, to, to set that one tone would mean everyone would follow that same road and, and that is impossible to do. So you set it based on the individual. So if Anthony Tyree comes in, into the office, even though he, he may suffer from the same substance that Anthony Tyree Part Two does, I can't treat them the same. But what I can present is this individual has been battling substance use disorder for three years. He has been using XYZ for this amount of time, this many days per week, this many times a month. Um, over the past 30 days, we have seen a decrease, um, by 50% of, of this drug and this drug and this drug. Anthony Tyree has also started to join the workforce. Um, he's, he, he's also started to go back to school. Um, he has returned to usage one time compared to last year, he returned six times. So that, that's how we kind of scale individually in the world of substance use because if not, we would say this one size will fit everyone that comes through the door.
And I think more specifically to some of the numbers, there's a couple of different ways we're measuring. One would be impact to the community. So we're looking at, uh, the number of ED visits, uh, for overdose. We're looking at the number of deaths that occurred due to accidental overdose or opioid overdose. Uh, we're also looking at the, um, the number of reversals that occur from naloxone. Um, there's, I can't remember, there's, there's like three or four of those, community numbers. Then there's the performance measurements that we're looking at, such as the number of people that have started the MAT, which is Medicaid Assistant Therapy Program. How many of them are successful at three months, six months, and nine months down the road? So we're, those are some of the metrics that we're following. I think that's what you were asking, right?
Right. And I, and I think that given all that we've known, we should be able to identify those metrics now.
We do, we have some of those. Some of them are harder to capture though.
Well, okay, can you share them with us?
Yes.
Maybe?
Not right now, but yeah, I can share that with you.
I mean, maybe at the next meeting, you could tell us where we stand right now.
Yes.
And where we're hopefully going.
Right. Um, some of them are harder to capture and so this process will help us capture some more of that data. A good example is the naloxone reversal. Like we're, we can tell you, we handed out 220 naloxone kits, uh, since January 1st. So that's one of the metrics numbers that you're talking about. Uh, but a lot of times we don't know when they get used because they're, they're somebody's brother overdosed and they used it or somebody, you know? We may know when the, uh, police enforcement reverses that our EMS does, but we may not know when a friend or neighborhood, a neighbor did it. Uh, that peer support, we hope will help us to capture more of those occurring. So I'm just saying, some of those numbers are, are not as, some of them are, some of them will get better as time goes on.
You mean capture rate?
Capture rate, right.
Good.
Yeah.
Naloxone, that's for the overdose, right?
Yes, sir. Reversal.
Okay. The, uh, how do you propose to deliver the education component of this?
Uh, we'll be using a health educator to work with the schools and the Boys and Girls Club and, uh, other venues such as during pregnancy visits and stuff like that. That same educator will be able to work with the, um, like providers and the community health workers to educate them and, um, do the, you know?
So we're going to hire an individual?
Well, we'll probably contract with somebody. We're planning on contracting to bring somebody in to do the program.
Is it going to be necessary that they've had experience themselves with overcoming drug use?
Not for the health educator. For the peer support, they would.
So we're going to hire one more individual. All right, peer support, how many peer supporters do you think it's going to take?
I'm going to start with two.
And we're going to hire them?
Contract.
Is there a recidivism rate among peer supporters?
Not as highlighted on the website, which captures all. Our NC peer support website actually lets us know how many peers are in each county, how many certified peers are in each county, and it, um, it gives us job openings, but it does not capture that, that rate for it.
There is a recidivism rate.
There probably is.
Well, I mean.
I know for a fact there is.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, within any profession, there would be one. So with that, what we're proposing here is we also provide supervision for the peers, which is something that the actual peer support program by the state that does not require, but to help the peer understand the difference between a supportive role and a clinical role, and also how far they can and can't go, when it is to help someone. We are going to, um, offer, um, clinical-based supervision for both peers.
Are you going to provide education, uh, benefits or service to churches?
Yes, absolutely. Um, we, part of what this whole program is, is to get everyone involved and everyone in the know of, of what's offered, how to start to work with their loved ones, who to get their loved ones to, um, and, and, and just, just continuing to try to bring the community together. The point of the peer is just like Jim was explaining, there are times where medications are used to do a reversal that the clinic may not know about, but a peer would because the peer is able to get out there and, and stay in the know. But that's also why we want to, uh, provide supervision so that peer also knows when to continue to get help for themselves as well too, so they don't go too far over there.
Well, you know, I, I have, I don't, I just don't think we're attacking it. I think people that have, have, have given the testimony and some of the behavior that they are interested in getting off of drugs, I think somehow this money should be given to assist them. These people have terrible problems. Uh, they're trying to get off of drugs, but at the same time, they can't get a job, they can't hold a job, they need additional medical care, uh, most of them are in poverty. So I think we're, we're working on, in my opinion, the wrong end of this thing. I also think that going out and having pity parties, excuse me, I don't mean to be cruel, with people who have abusers of drugs is working on the wrong end of this. We should be going after drug dealers, we should be going after the, the corrupt part of this thing to put a stop to it. We are continuing to support the disease by supporting it with these kinds of services. And I, I just, I just think we need to develop a, a better program that's more aimed at helping someone who wants to be off of this stuff.
I think the closest thing that most people are familiar with, with peer support may be in the AA, when you think about how AA's been around for a long time, and they always call them the sponsor, they don't call them the peer support, but that's, that's basically what it is. I don't think there's enough money to just help people, giving them money for jobs or those other things. I think that it, the, the community involvement, getting these people, the, the money that we're talking about, supporting the efforts of getting people to work with the people you're talking about. There's already treatment out there. Uh, Anthony provides treatment. You know, Claire, at her job, she provides counseling and treatment and stuff like that, they're there. How do you get them there? How do we get them there? And that's where the peer support helps hook them up with resources that are already available for them.
Well, many of the experts that I've talked to say that they're not going there for help until they personally decide to go themselves. And that, that is a personal decision that's made and then they, they're the ones that are seeking help. Going out and trying to put your arm around some of these people and saying, let me help you, is a waste of time.
Well, when they ask for that help, where, who do they go to?
Mr. Langley.
Now, one of the things that, that we have to, have to consider is this, is what, what you're proposing is, is a very good thing, but, but also, uh, a lot of people who have substance abuse problems, if you could catch them on that day where they hit rock bottom, that is the day. And if you don't have a system in place to deal with them that day, then when they walk away, they're going to be worse than what they were when they hit rock bottom. So, but basically what you're planning to do, and then with the things like mobile crisis, uh, we can hook all, you connect all the dots. That's pretty much what we, what we're trying to do, is to connect all the dots so that people who want help, and you're right, someone who doesn't want help, you can't give them help. But everybody comes to that point where they say, I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired, if it only happens once. But what I'm saying is that one time it, it happens, we must be prepared to interact, to intervene right then, because if you don't do it then, we've lost them. So I'm all for you.
When you, when you go back to the budget that you've got up there, you, you keep talking about pilot programs and you use the example of Pintown. I didn't see any money in that budget for working with the church.
That's the one that says opioid project support, we're looking at 10,000, uh, per year. That's all to start with.
Yeah, but I mean, to be here again, what, what I've learned over the last two conferences, the national and the state, there is a lot of ideas out here, but it gets right back to what Commissioner Langley just said. Well, that person's at rock bottom, if they're in Pintown or Aurora or Blunts Creek or Chaco Winnity or Bath or Bell Haven, it, we need to have pilot programs all over and 10,000 is not enough because that person needs to have a contact when they're at the bottom. They don't need, they don't need to worry about somebody during the weekend, they can't get in contact with them until Monday morning. So what I'm suggesting is that we, we need to see more faith-based or local community pilot money. And it, you know, 10,000 to me is just a drop in the bucket for the problems that exist out there.
So that's, that's where the peers come in. You know, that, the peer support program was built specifically for what you are presenting to us right now. At midnight, when somebody says, I can't do this anymore, and they can't call the clinic because there's no one there, they can call their peer. If, if they're like, hey, um, I was just brought back, right? Um, I don't know what to do right now, but I'm, I'm feeling a little sick. Peers are able to go get you and take you to the doctor's office. They ride with you, they talk to you, they find out what's going on next. They find out what you want to do. If you want to get connected with faith-based, peers work out of faith-based all the time. It's, it's all part of the process because we can't have, the clinics open 24/7 all the time, so the peers are pretty much a clinic without walls. They have that opportunity to go to all parts of the county. A phone call comes in, I need help, right? So, but that peer is also trained to understand, are you just calling me to get to a doctor's appointment or are you calling me because there's something really going on right now? So, and, and from there, that peer is not providing, um, clinical level services. That peer is connecting that individual that says, I had an overdose last night and my cousin brought me back. Really? Have you talked to a therapist? Have you talked to a specialist about that? Well, I would, but my leg is, is, is going numb and it's about the fall off. I was so, have you been to a doctor's office? No, because I don't have insurance. Well, do you know there's ways that you can do that? That's what the peer, the peer is, is a resource link to everything that someone can possibly think of. However, though, because the peer has lived experience and return to usage is part of the recovery process. That peer is somebody who the state has said, you have to be in active recovery for at least 12 months. But thi- this program that we're proposing, you're still in recovery, you're still attending your resource meetings, you're still moving forward what you need to be successful for your family, but you're also getting a clinical level supervision that is not required by, by the state to, to say, hey, you went a little bit outside of the supportive realm here, we need you to stay in support and let the clinicians take care of that piece. So on all parts of our county, that peer is able to get into the van, get into the bus, go find you, you know? We have peers now that if you were by the tree and you can make one phone call, that peer will be there. Now, that peer also knows that if, if you get there and you do not want to leave, then they're going to leave you with resources and get a good contact some way that they can reach out to you and say, hey, are you still okay? You have my contact information, call me if you need anything. And that's really what the peer program is based around, being, being that clinic without walls.
Commissioner Booth.
I, I, a question that I have, and I'm being honest with you right now, if I had to vote right now, it would probably be no, because everybody asked the question that I was jotting down, asking. Number one, you got a peer, got peer pressure this 12 months, oh, clear, clean. Uh, Mr. Richardson asked, is, what's, what's the chances of them dropping off the wagon? It's very high within 12 months. I've done it for years. And I, and I believe in, I believe, and I have also, I also know that you find a good peer person, they're going to be the best resource that you have. I know that. I've done it for 20 years. They're going to come to your office and tell you, this guy fell off the wagon. But the other question that I have, who's watching the peer worker? That's the question that I have, who's watching the peer worker? And the other thing I, I would ask, I could vote for this, but I want you to come back with it before three years is over. I just can't, and I got some phone calls after the last time he was here, while he was against us. I wasn't against you. I'm against waste. I'm against getting money and people not getting the services that you, we giving money for them to get. That is what I am against. If you can do a good service, you got my support. If you can come back in 12, and I will vote for this, but I, I can't vote for you, give you the money for three years, then you come back, this failed. The money gone and it failed. But if you can come every 12 months, you got my support.
I think that's a, a fair request. I, but I have more questions because y'all throwing a lot out here. We had church members on the, this recommendation group. I mean, they were there, they represented the churches, they were part of this recommendation. Community members were part of this recommendation. Peers were part of, peer users that have reformed were part of this decision-making. So we tried to address those particular issues. Like I said, 40 ideas are out there. I'm sure y'all have seven ideas right now. Everybody has these ideas. That's why when it comes to the churches and stuff like that, the community health workers are very important. The task force is important because if those churches say, you know what would be a great program to institute? We have the opioid money, we can come back and, and rest, ask for, or we could apply for grants. And that's, that's a very key thing that I think you may not be thinking about, but I brought one the last time I was here, was a million dollar grant just for having a collaboration to address opioids. to address opioids. So as soon as we get support to do that, once that RFA comes out, we apply for that money, that's another million dollars coming to the county to address the opioid. That's impact that you're looking for. This is not just, you know, wild ideas. The people that came into this room are the advocates for it. And every one of them had the same thoughts y'all are having when they brought it in there. And they all thought about this stuff. So they feel like this is the best recommendations. And I'm not even on part of the behavioral task force. They presented to me as the, because I'm going to be the steward of the money, I guess, most of it running through the health department, you know, as the county rep. And, and this is, addiction has been something we're trying to address for years. So I guess my point is, that, you know, I'm fine with us coming back and presenting on the data and what's happening. I don't think that's a problem.
Commissioner Langley.
And to speak to your next question of who's, who's going to be overseeing the peers. Each peer will be put with a clinical level, a licensed level supervisor. Those will be the individuals that will oversee that peer. Unfortunately, the evidence structure for recovery has returned to usage built into it. It's, it's there. We cannot get around it. I say it all the time, drugs are doing what they're supposed to do. They make you feel like you need them to cope. You are working with the individual to continue pushing them forward so they can start leaning on other pieces of themselves to cope. And part of a peer's job would be lean on their supervisor, and their supervisor will be overseeing that, that peer's action.
Commissioner Langley. And to, to piggyback off what Commissioner Booth said, I, I think what should, what, what would probably work a lot better is, is every six months, you just come back and inform us of exactly how it's going. And that, that way, we will hear from you twice a year. And then that way, you don't wait 12 whole months to find out if it's working. Six months from the day that we say, yay, let's go ahead and do this, come back and inform us how it's going then. And then that way, it's, it's a lot easier to, to, to make corrective measures instead, instead of waiting a year out.
Commissioner Dethrich.
I can appreciate what you're doing, and I think the idea is good. I've, I've seen, I mean, just the other night, I was looking at the old Woodstock in 1969, where they, some of, they were having bad trips, and somebody would take care of that person, then they'd get better and say, okay, it's time for you to help the next person that comes in. And they were able to take care of a lot of things. And I know that's an odd characterization to bring forth, but it, it could work. The problem I have from a, a broader perspective is that while you guys are trying to do the good thing as bureaucrats for us, and using dollars from the federal government, I'm sure, we have bureaucrats in Washington DC working for DHS, and maybe in the other parts of the executive. You're in a sinking boat right now, and you're bailing. You're trying to help people. You're bailing that boat out. And you've got some other bureaucrats at the front of the boat, that's grabbing water and putting it back in the boat, and smiling and laughing at you while you're bailing. Because we have an open southern border, and fentanyl is coming in in mass quantities. And there's three to four times more fentanyl being found and discovered this year, interdicted, and that's only what they're, they're discovering. So much is coming across the border. You've got a supply issue. There's tremendous amount of supply in the United States. The price is cheap. People are able to access it and use it for, in a variety of different forms. And no matter what you do, if the federal government is not going to actually try to stop fentanyl coming across the border, which they are not doing right now. I think they're, they have a secret plan to bring it across the border, get the nation in a terrible state, get people either hooked, or people, you have you guys helping them, then everybody else is on drugs, and then they turn this, this society we have into a social society. That's what I see, until they make a real stable interdiction at the southern border and do their part, and they're not doing it. You know, a lot of people thought the war on drugs was lost years ago. I, I've seen it from the local level. I've seen it from a broad perspective. And the war on drugs not only must be won, it's going to have to be start, that, that, that battle's going to have to start right now. Because if we don't try to get the people, the cartels that are getting rich and creating fiefdoms in Mexico, which we're going to have to deal with later, on a variety of perspectives. They'll have armies we'll have to deal with. Because they're rich from, from, from American kids dying. Drugs, I mean, these drugs are coming from China, through Mex- through Mexico, up across our open border. They're cheap, and folks are getting their hands on it in, in vast quantities. And you guys are just bailing out as hard as you can. I mean, you're doing the best you can, and you got those other bureaucrats in front of the boat, just bailing back in and laughing at you. We've got to stop their laughter. Okay? So I, I would like to see, not only this group, but all politicians across the state and the nation take an active role in stopping what the source problem is. And that's an open southern border.
Commissioner Richardson.
Okay, I'll only take a minute, and then I'll be ready to vote myself. But when you come back in six months, I want to hear about your staffing. I don't want a report that's glossy, because your staffing is going to be the key to your success. And you know, and I know, that's going to be the biggest problem that you have. And I want, going to want to hear about turnover. And the second question that I have is, will peers be periodically drug tested?
Who's the standard?
So, peers receiving drug screens, it's, it's not a standard for, for the state program, but it's a standard for what we do here, yes. Because again, return to usage is part of that process of recovery.
Well, I, I want to understand that that's a part of what we are approving tonight, unless this board objects, that your peers be periodically drug tested.
Randy.
Randy?
I'm for this, but I'd like to see you come back sooner than every six months. I'd like to see maybe every other month, especially initially.
No, if you give us any time to get things going.
Right. But you say you had six years of data previous, so I would say you've
Well, you mean the data. I'll be glad to come in and present some data on it. I didn't want to do that, because I thought it would take, I thought everybody knew there was.
We're, we're having some success. But I'm for this. And I think your peer group, your peers, it's going to be therapeutic to your peer people to be helping these folks that have hit rock bottom. Because they go through it, and that's, that's helping them too. So I think this, everybody's holding everybody up.
So if I'm understanding, I'll come back and present to you on the matrix in measurements, performances, and stuff like that, and show where we have, and then you'll know where we're going in the future.
Right. You, you, you come up with a, a chart that, a scorecard, so to speak, saying, look, we're winning, or we think we are.
One point, Mr. Richardson stated that he want every peer person drug tested. And you said that's part of your process. But I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to hold you to that, because there's some legal, legal moves when you, when you hiring people about drug testing them. So I, and that, that's, that's, I mean, you just can't, you got to respect their rights also. That's what, that's what I'm saying.
I, well, one, one of the things that, that I'm having trouble with is that the last two meetings I've been to, and the comments, and the, and the presenters, is that this is a really, really new, and I'm trying to think, I hate to use the word technology, but I just think that, that, you know, we're, we're going to find some things that are working in other parts of the country that need to be employed faster than three years.
But we're already doing those. I think we're already doing those, is what I'm saying. We already have a syringe exchange program. We already have MAT that's being offered. We already have increased behavior health. That's why I'm saying, those strategies that would have been easy for us to come up here and say, fund it for 18 years, we're already doing. And so, there's no reason for us to, to, to come to y'all with those new strategies. And I, I can show you right here, the strategies, the 12 strategies that they have talked about.
No, 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 no.
I'm not going to say it, but we're already doing five of them. So.
I get the feeling that some people think that we're, we're not trying to listen to you guys. And as you've heard all of us, we're, we're all coming at it from a different perspective. We got some people that think it's the southern border. We got some people that think you could build additional jails, and you could lock these people up that are, that are selling that. Then you've got other people that think that you need to address it with churches or other organizations within the community.
I understand.
It is a community problem. And it's not something that anybody can do on their own. The commissioners can't do it. The health department can't do it. I mean, it takes us all working together with the goal that we want, we want to turn this thing around. I, you know, so I think, I think, I think we spent enough time that if somebody wants to make a motion.
Let me just clear something up before we get to the board.
Okay. Well, I want to be sure. You're going to come back with a report on progress of the program every six months. And I think that addresses what the chairman was saying. That's an opportunity to make changes. When you come back to us in six months, every six months for a formal report, if changes are needed, you know, probably based on your recommendations. The other thing, I think, for what Commissioner Booth was talking about, insofar as drug testing of the individuals we were talking about, that's a condition of employment when you go in. Obviously, if you have a serious problem going in, I don't think there's any court in the world that would deny it, and under those conditions of employment, periodic drug testing.
And I agree with you. But I, I mean, I, I'm through with it. I agree with what you're saying, if when you hire them, give them a drug test. But what I'm also saying is to be extremely cautious when you hire people, because some laws will not let you just pick up folks and carry them to get a drug test.
Oh, well, I understand, I understand what you're saying with that. But periodic drug testing, I think, is important. It lets me sleep at night. Well, I, I'm confused. Are we, are we talking about we're hiring employees, or we contracting?
Contracting. All the contracts are all contract.
So I mean, that's a different, I mean, they're going to sign a contract, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Brian?
Mr. Chairman, just, and just one comment, it's all I want to say. And what it is, is I would implore the board to remember, as Anthony says, success is different with every individual. Some of you were at the NACA, or at the Association County Commissioners' Annual Conference, where the lady spoke about that. They have a very successful program in what they've done. And she said, we had one client who would come in and walk away, and come in and walk away, and come in and walk away. And one day, that person walked up and said, what can I do for you? And he said, I'm hungry. They gave him a sandwich. And that started the process. And for them, that was a success. So I would implore you to be careful about saying, what is success, and trying to put everybody in a box. You got to look at every case individually and determine what is success for that person. And it may be different. It will be different.
Yeah. Motion to approve. Okay, is there a second? All right. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, thank you for your patience in, in trying to, you know, walk us through it. Can we, can we do the tobacco policy after our break?
Just like that. Well, it'll be done in a second.
Okay.
No, you can do it when you want to, Frankie. You're in charge.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't know for this group whether they're going to talk 30 minutes on the tobacco or not.
Can we get Jim back to, to, for COVID, every, at least every two months, maybe? Give us a report. Because I'd like to know, there's still people dying out there. A lot of people I know have gotten sick.
You need, turn your mic on.
That's on the agenda for the end.
Yeah, that's on. We can bring him forward since he's here now? No, we take it up at the very end. He doesn't have to be here to do that. You, you agree?
Whatever you want. Whatever you want.
Do the tobacco?
Okay.
But if we get into any discussion at all, we're going to take a break.
I'm, I'm fine with that. Okay, so the, the policy at the health department has always been to smoke within 50 feet of the building itself. And that's county policy, and the health department has adopted that, too. However, Medicaid has put out that by, by, in order to build Medicaid, we have to be a camp, a tobacco-free campus, which means not 50 feet from the building, but the whole grounds that the health department sets on and has stewards over. So that means, we had, in order to comply with that, in order to get Medicaid dollars, we went and drafted, and the Board of Health approved a new tobacco policy for the health department. The, because it's tobacco-related, though, the county commissioners need to, what do they call it? Not approve, adopt? Is that what it is? Adopt this Board of Health policy?
It's a policy.
Right.
Okay. You guys have had the information provided in advance. Entertainer motion to approve the policy.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're one, Frankie.
We're going to take a 15-minute break. Next item is solid waste update. Wesh?
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm going to do my best to get us a little bit more back on track. So hopefully, this will be fairly quick. Couple of areas I want to update y'all on are the mega sites and our collection site improvement projects that we're working on. We'll start with the mega sites. As we last were together and talking about these, we were moving forward with looking into the property aspect of these two mega sites. We have been working with Garrett and Moore, our engineers, to locate possible sites that match our criteria. As we've kind of touched on briefly before, central location on north side and south side of the river, close to but not directly on a major highway, which I'm calling 264, 17, 32, 33, 92, and 99, the heavily, heavily trafficked roads around the county. The heaviest traffic. There are a lot of other heavy traffic. Also looking adequate size for our needs. Got to remember that south side includes disaster debris potential. So we're looking for a larger tract to land on the south side than on the north side. Taking into account soil and water considerations, and we also do prefer, but don't require, access to our county water system. We, if we can connect to that versus drilling a well, that's a whole lot easier. So during this process, Garrett and Moore has proposed multiple sites to Christina and I. And we have looked at pros and cons to those sites that they have proposed, and we're also, and we have proposed additional sites back to Garrett and Moore for them to look further into as well. That's the next step that Garrett and Moore is taking. They're looking into these potential sites we've identified to see if any would be suitable for construction. They're mapping out wetlands that are on the site, or maybe on the site. They're looking at the flood zones that may be present, looking at the topography of the site, as we talked about, you know, elevations make a big difference in the plans that we've conceptually come up with. And they're overlaying those plans over what they map out this site to see, you know, what we're looking at and doing, does it even fit with all the constraints? So they should be able to come back with some overview satellite image with all these things marked, and say, you know, this is a site that we could really see fitting the bill for what we need to do. We plan to discuss these further with Garrett and Moore within the next two weeks. We've tentatively set a timeframe for a meeting to, for them to get their work done, and to look further into those. And based on that, per the county manager, discussion on any particular sites would need to come back to the board in closed session, and we will bring those to the board when, when that's ready. Any questions on the mega site portion of the update?
Okay. You want to get to the next item?
Certainly. Collection site improvements, as we touched on briefly just a minute ago. Yatesville site did open on August 5. So that, that, that project has wrapped up, and as, as you mentioned, things do look good out there. I think the new, the new layout is working well. For anybody that's been, has been able to see that, if not, stop by there, take a look. I think things have definitely improved the traffic flow on that site. The next steps, we have met with the engineer to plan, to begin planning the River Road and Cherry Run improvements. And we are currently waiting to receive a draft plan. We have physically walked both of those sites with the engineer to pick out, this needs to be done, that needs to be done. And here's other things we want to address. As we've talked about before, phase one included some retaining wall expansion and repair, adding additional concrete pads for containers, safety railings, which are coming to every site, lighting improvements, improve some electrical work on the sites, grading and stone, and fencing and gate repairs. The engineer is actually waiting for some additional surveying information for Chaco Winnetou right now, before they can have the preliminary pr- plans drafted for us to then work off of. So hopefully, we'll be able to have that wrapped up in a nice package to be put out in the bid before. put out in bid before too long. I can't put a timestamp on it right now until we get those plans back, but hopefully in the near future.
What was the deal about Chaco Winity?
Waiting on some additional surveying information.
For the Gray Road site, you mean?
Yes, sir. Yeah, the surveyor went out and took some readings, but I think, based on what I heard, they didn't say what the readings were. So, it was almost not very good information to use, so they had to go back out and do that again.
Randy?
I'd like, when you're talking about improvements and whatnot, it would be hard to take a picture so we can show it to the folks. I stopped out there and looked because I'm doing some work down that way. I just swung in there, and it does look nice. But to show other folks what it looks like would not be a bad idea.
Certainly, we can do that going forward.
This is going to make you feel real good. Yatesville opened up on a Friday. The next Friday, the bridge opened up on Highway 264, close to Yatesville. I got more calls and more emails thanking us for the Yatesville site than I did on the bridge.
Well, that's great.
But we have a lot of people, you know, from other parts of the world that go across that bridge, but all local folks go to the convenience.
We didn't have many calls about it being closed, but I know there were some that were happy to see it open, so.
We appreciate it.
Wish I could take credit, but I can't.
It looked like it was planned. I don't.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Christina?
The next item on your agenda is regarding a request to authorize North Carolina Division of Water Infrastructure Funding Application. I'm going to ask Mr. Rich Moore with McDavid Associates to come up and to speak in detail on this subject. If you'll recall, we are involved in seven different North Carolina Division of Water Infrastructure-funded projects that are currently ongoing. Mr. Moore with McDavid Associates is contracted to provide construction administration as well as construction inspection services on all of these projects. And so, this evening, he's going to come and specifically give you information regarding this request to complete a funding application to reallocate some existing funds.
Good evening. And what we're going to specifically address is what we refer to as Boeck County Water District 1 funded project, but the activities were all related to the South Side Water Treatment Plant, and specifically to add a new well, supply well, and to add additional filters to the South Side Water Treatment Plant. And it was done under Boeck County District 1 because the interconnection that was installed that allowed the water from the South Side Plant to go into District 1, you know, provided some additional supply relief. And so, there's additional demand from District 1. And District 1 had a little bit more favorable economic statistics that allowed the initial financial assistance award to basically 75% grant and 25% loan. So, this was a project that was bid, and it was exceptionally over budget. You know, T-11 was our low bidder on both projects or both contracts, and proceeded. What they have come back with is they've identified there's been a significant increase in material costs, and, you know, on the order of $750,000. And we asked them for justification. They provided us the material supply orders from, you know, when they bid to present. We've seen this industry-wide. This is a result of, you know, the COVID situation, which our economy was basically shut down nationwide, resulted in, you know, egregious material delivery delays, manufacturing delays, which are still ongoing. And when the problem was identified, you know, we asked the state for consideration for supplemental grant funds to cover the documented material cost increases. And they came back and recommended that we ask for loan money, which we didn't think was a good thing. And so, through discussions with them, what we have identified is that from the other projects that we have ongoing in the county, there are approximately $2 million unallocated funds that have been approved, have been awarded, and have been authorized by a local government commission. And what we have been recommended is to have a portion of those unallocated funds to be redirected to this project. We felt like it would be easy if they just did a direct approval, but they have requested that in order to do it, they would like an application to be submitted for the September 30th deadline that formally requests that the monies be reallocated to District 1 to cover the material cost increase. And so, what we've got for your consideration is just the authorizing resolution to approve submitting an application, you know, nothing else, just to kind of continue that process of getting those funds reallocated. And so, that's what we're, you know, trying to recommend to allow this project to continue to move forward without further scope reductions, to allow it to, you know, based on what we've awarded, essentially.
Motion to approve. Motion in a second. Okay, motion in a second. Any questions or comments?
Yeah. I would just like to say, and I'm going to vote for this, I hate to, but this is one more time, too much money chasing too few goods.
Agreed.
And it was designed to be this way.
Agreed.
And our bureaucrats throwing all this money around would have been wise to do it a lot differently.
I agree.
John?
How many projects is the $2 million involved in of this? What did you say, seven projects ongoing?
In terms of unallocated, five.
Five? So, the $2 million's coming from five projects, right?
Yes.
Excluding this one, obviously.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Yes.
You said that he awarded the bid, we awarded him the bid.
Correct.
And now he has to for some more money.
Correct.
And his excuse is materials went up.
Correct.
Those materials, what he bid on is what we presented, am I correct?
That is correct.
So, that's his loss, am I correct?
Well, and again, there's a provision in your contract that, you know, allows the contractor for additional compensation if he's impacted by forces that are beyond his control. Typically, those are force majeure, like, you know, weather-related impacts and things of that nature.
That's what, but.
And what we've seen is that COVID has provided contractors.
Well, COVID's been over two years.
Correct.
And right now, COVID is getting blamed for everything, including people not eating and people not working.
I agree.
Okay, gentlemen, any other questions of Richard?
All right, if not, we've got a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you very much.
One opposed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Those opposed.
Multiple eyes.
Christina?
The next item in your agenda booklet is regarding a vehicle purchase for facilities maintenance. Funds were included in the fiscal year 2023 budget to purchase a truck for the Facilities Maintenance Department. Per the Beaufort County purchasing policy, purchases greater than $30,000 are to be approved by the Board of Commissioners. Staff received quotes from various vendors, and you will see those listed in your agenda As we were just talking about previously, the buying and purchasing situation is definitely different now than it was 12 months prior or even 18 months prior when the budget was being put together. So, what we're having, we're having issues locating the basic white work truck. And I believe Emergency Management spoke regarding this a couple of meetings ago, just regarding vehicle availability. So, what we have presented to you, we received a quote from Fire Ford that has a vehicle that is currently available now at $38,794, and we would request approval to write that purchase order in order to receive that vehicle. The other quotes that you have listed here are not a guarantee of that quote, nor are there, nor are any of the dealerships giving a guaranteed delivery date. So, right now, we are working on just what is available to be purchased.
You got the money in the budget?
Yes, sir. It's less, no additional funds are required.
Entertain a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a question, just a question. The vehicle that it's replacing, how old is the vehicle?
I do not have that information with me tonight. It was a vehicle that was originally scheduled to be surplus in the Water Department, and it was transferred over because in fiscal year 22, the personnel position was approved. And at that time, what was presented was that in fiscal year 22, the personnel position would be approved, and in fiscal year 23, the vehicle would be purchased. So, we attempted to spread out the cost of the new position and equipment required to the new position over two budget years.
Okay, but so, we won't know the amount of mileage either on it, will we?
I do not know now. It was included when it was presented two years ago when the plan was put into place. All of the mileage, all of the vehicle replacements for the Public Works Department, there's a, if you recall, I think it was implemented four or five years ago, where we have a vehicle checklist that each vehicle is looked at, all of the costs are summarized, and a point system is applied to each vehicle in order to go through our process of surplusing vehicles and turning the fleet over.
I mean, my point being, right now, we are probably in a recession at this point. Technically, we are in a recession. There's going to be a time where the cost of goods and services are going to drop. It's going to come down. Right now, the inflated price of these items is outrageously high. It has to come down because, again, it'll be the price of supply and demand. Can we not wait to buy this vehicle later? The money will still be there. I mean, if it's still running, why can't we just keep using it?
Because once it goes out, which, again, it was scheduled to be surplus two years ago, and it is having issues. So, once it goes out, we're totally out until we're able to locate a new vehicle. So, we were able to.
I mean, can you not fix it? I mean, mechanic's still around this area. It costs money, I know. I've put my 13-year-old car in the shop every now and then. Any other questions?
Okay. All those in favor of purchasing the new truck from Fire Ford for $38,794, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Thank you, Commissioners. And going to the last item that I have this evening is also regarding the vehicle purchases. For this item, we have not been able to locate vehicles. Again, we've had numerous conversations with dealerships all across the state, even in Virginia. So, we've just been unable to locate anything. What we have found is that when a dealer gets a window of opportunity that opens there, whether it's the factory or whomever they speak with, they have a certain window that's typically only a few days long, where they are able to place an order for a specific vehicle. What we've run into is because of the purchasing policy, where any item above the $30,000, that we are not able to approve that without your approval. I'm asking that you increase that threshold from 30,000 to...
40,000.
To 40,000. Yes, sir. I just, I need to put the glasses on my face instead of my head. And so, that would allow us that when a dealer calls and says that he has that window and it has the specifications that we need, that we would be able to place that order. We did that with a previous vehicle that was involved in a vehicle accident where the vehicle was totaled and the replacement vehicle was less than 30. And literally, we had been calling and calling different places, and no one would make a commitment. And a dealer called and said, "I have a window, but I need to know by Friday." And so, we were able to do that because, again, that threshold. So, just asking for this one, just for vehicle purchases during this year to increase that threshold for this specific purpose.
You got the money in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Well, this is for two.
Yes, sir. This would be for two. And basically, based on what we are looking at now, if a window were to open today, based on the prices we had a week and a half ago when we prepared this, they would come in at like 38.5. So, I'm trying to give myself a little bit of an increase in case the next window has a little bit of an increase. And it's the same with all manufacturers. Chevrolet, Ford, Dodge will actually not even provide us with any type of pricing at all. So, we are not being picky. We're not trying to, we're just trying to get a vehicle.
John?
You really only have got enough money in the budget for one vehicle. You got $65,000, it says, and the price of a vehicle's going to be pushing 40.
Yes, sir.
But she goes on to say additional funds will be obtained from other budget line items.
Okay. Can't we approve this by voice, by email?
No.
You got to have a meeting?
I mean, I think it's different than your existing purchasing policy, and that's why we're bringing it to you specifically for this and for this one time only. If there are changes that need to be made to the purchasing policy moving forward, we can certainly have those discussions offline and bring them back as a full recommendation for doing something for a longer term. But our hope is that the economy gets a little better, the market stabilizes, and we're able to do a little better. So, these are for individual Water Department trusts, because you're going to have another one from Emergency Services coming up, too.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the recommendation. Motion to approve. Is there a second? I'll second the motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next is Chris.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Chris, either before, after, will you just give us a short update on...
Carney?
Carney.
I'll be happy to after. That'll be okay.
Okay, that's fine.
So, as Christina mentioned, I'm echoing a lot of what she has said, and as Emergency Services and purchasing and pricing vehicles, very much getting that frontline perspective of what we're encountering on both state contract requirements for vehicles, avenues that have served us very well in the past, especially on a competitive pricing. The pricing's changing, and the availability of those vehicles are changing. On the second page of the materials I provided for the agenda, these figures are coming straight from the state contracting. And state contracting is what we price typically through is the Sheriff's Association that's awarded annually, typically from October 1st through September of the following year. And 22 years ago, Dodge won the contract, last year Ford won the contract. It looks like, from what's been released so far, Chevrolet will have the contract for this year. And it's very interesting, as we talk to different departments about trying to find vehicles, the, some of the similarities we hear in stories and some differences we hear in stories from the dealership. So, for us, for our two vehicles this year, which we discussed during the budget process, we had been working with the state contract dealership to acquire two trucks and actually have emails where we received quotes back in July, I'm sorry, June. And as you know, quotes are only good for 30 days, so we tried to be strategic in timing that. So, our quote was active at the change of the fiscal year. Once the fiscal year rolled over, we were able to process the PO, and we got radio silence from the dealership. And no response to our emails, no response to our phone calls. We actually ended up sending someone to the dealership to inquire about our vehicle. First, we were told that, "Yeah, yeah, we got your vehicles ordered. You know, everything's due in by Friday, and we'll let you know." Friday came around, we didn't hear anything. The following week, we sent someone back, "Yeah, we didn't get your order in on the 2022 allotment. We'll have to put in 2023 allotment." So, the same vehicle that we had spe- So, the same vehicle that we had spec'd two months earlier, now subject to a $7,000 increase in price. So, so, we're experiencing not only the difficulty of finding vehicles and increase in price, we're really, we're really subject to that customer service aspect as well. So, following very similar to what Christina and her folks have been doing is trying to find avenues around state contracting but would still give us a competitive price. And that's what we've been active on so far. We've actually got a quote back that is competitive from Lee Chevrolet to the state contract price on what would be for the Chevrolets coming up. But these top numbers, just to kind of give you a perspective of where prices are falling, these, these first two, that is the cheapest pickup truck, full-size pickup truck that you can purchase. That's a two-wheel drive, standard cab pickup truck with no towing package on state contract. And you can see for this year, Chevrolet would be at 29,754 and Ford will be at 28,111. So, by the time you start adding towing package, we prefer four-wheel drive capabilities for what we use them for. We're already bumping the $30,000 threshold that we would encounter per policy for you guys. Now, we, we certainly don't mind bringing that back, we're not asking for additional money, but it would streamline the process of being able for us to acquire vehicles without having to do that on a monthly basis for you all. So, mirroring what Christina has presented, we're asking for funding for, for preapproval for this year of 42.5. And that was, that's not additional money, that money's already been allocated through the budget process. We're just simply asking for a grace in coming to you beyond the $30,000 PO. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Motion.
Second.
Add a second. Questions?
Sir?
Did you and Christina pray?
We didn't, actually. No, we did not.
I mean, the vehicle that you have right now, is it still running?
Yes. So, we, we have two, the two vehicles that this would be replacing, on the fire side would be a 2015 Ford Explorer that has 100,000 miles on it. We just spent $700 on replacing some front-end work and front bearings. On the EMS side is a 2019 Durango that has 122,000 miles on it.
But so, yeah, that's, that's not really high mileage with the way these vehicles are built now.
They're hard miles.
They are hard miles, yes, sir.
Well, okay.
They take fifty miles per hour.
Well, there may be hard miles, but with the precision engineering that you've got right now, there's no reason these vehicles can't go to 200,000 miles. I mean, we got, we got a, we got a very expensive policy in running and maintaining trucks and most people don't understand running and maintaining trucks and most people don't understand discipline from the abuse of the operator of the truck. So, we need, we need to be taking a look at this when our budget comes up because there's some serious problems here.
And, and I agree and, and one of the other problems that, that we encounter in emergency services, purchasing new vehicles aside, is having a fleet of spare vehicles so that when one does need to be repaired or it's down for two weeks because we're waiting parts. We had a wiring harness go out on a, on a Durango from a deer strike and we were three weeks waiting for that. So, it's not just purchasing new vehicle, it's a depth of, of spare vehicle so that when one's being repaired, we have another one to continue operations. And that, that's the other obstacle we run into going down the avenue of, of extended repair times for, for vehicles with high mileage.
Well, yeah, and years ago, when I was Commissioner, we always had spare vehicles. I mean, I, I remember the, and Hood, you remember, this environmental sciences guys, they were driving the old sheriff cars.
Well, that's right. We, we took sheriff's vehicles and made them into spare vehicles. And there's no reason you can't do that because the sheriff's doing the same thing everybody else is doing. He's letting vehicles go before they wear out. Any, any, any other questions?
Using them old, old cars, that's what we had to send them to get him to fall.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Thank you, Commissioner. On, on Carney, so, spoke with, spoke with Melody today. Just a little bit of progress each and every day and we'll, we'll certainly continue to take those blessings as, as God gives them. He's, he's made substantial progress just on the physical therapy side of things. And if you've been following the videos on, on Facebook that she's posted, he's, he's doing some walking exercises now and a lot of that's been heavily assisted by therapists. They're really starting to wean away from some of that today. So, today was the first time that he actually manipulated his leg movement as, as far as moving the knees and stepping forward on his own without the assistance of, of a machine or a therapist to do that for him. So, it's very much those, those small steps that we just continue to see each day and we're gonna keep praying for it and, and hope they continue. But the staff at Shepherd has been great. They're, they're, they're just good at what they do and it's, it's a good place for them to be right now.
When you, when you talk to the family, will you express our concerns and?
I sure will. I sure will and please continue to keep them in the prayers, not just Carney, but the family, the family as well because it's a difficult time as you can all imagine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're down to the financial report. Anita?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have before you this evening the graph of our sales tax distribution. You'll see that our most recent distribution was the June sales. They came in at $1,266,400. That is an all-time high since we've been keeping track since I've been here of our sales tax distributions. So, that completes us this year at 12.8 million in sales tax collections. That's up 1.139 million from prior year or 9.8% increase. As far as a budget to actual, as I said, the, the actual collections are the 12.8 million for the year. We budgeted 11.27, so, we do have a surplus of 1.537 million in sales tax for last year. Turning to the next page. Because our sales tax distributions have been so robust last year, I mentioned to you about three or four months ago that it looked like we were going to have to pay the school some additional sales tax funding, reserve funding for capital and I estimated that amount to be 544,973. I'm able to do that collection now that we know our final sales tax numbers. That actual number that we're going to owe to them is 547,763. And it is my understanding that at the July meeting, the board voted to set that 547,763 aside for the school reserved as capital and that the schools would come back before the board and request distribution of that funding and let you know how they would like to spend it. Any questions?
You want to get to your next item, contract renewal debt book?
Yes, sir. So, our renewal is up for our debt book software. We use this software to track our debt service payments, all of our debt footnotes that have to go in our financial audit report and also to be in compliance with the new Gatsby 87 ruling and tracking our leases, folks that we lease from and folks that we lease to. So, it's the software that I really can't perform my work without. I reached out to the, the guy at Debtbook and asked them, "Could we get a discount if we did a multi-year contract as opposed to just an annual renewal?" And he did say that if we did a two-year contract, we could lock the price in at $9,750 per year for fiscal year 23 and 24 as opposed to paying $11,750 just for fiscal year 2023 and an unknown amount because I won't know the increase yet for the 2024 yet. So, my recommendation is that we go ahead and approve the two-year contract with Debtbook because I know I'm going to need this software the next two years and the price will be $9,750 both years. And the contract's on, begins on page 229 and the quote is on page 231.
You've heard the recommendation. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Anita, we need to go back to item for consent and that's on page nine.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to flip to page nine?
Can give you a little bit of background there. Basically, the county has been awarded a $64,130 grant from the Division of Coastal Management. It is to develop an impact demonstration site at the community college and there is no county match for that project. The project summary is on page 21 if you want a detailed summary on what that site will do. Basically, it's a, I would just be reading here, "The hybrid solution will be combined with the development of educational materials for developers and homeowners to learn about different nature-based and hybrid options that can be implemented on future residential or commercial projects, ultimately reducing stormwater runoff." So, basically, my understanding of the project is they try to show ways that you can use natural landscape to infiltrate, absorb and reduce stormwater runoff and that's what that site will be doing.
I believe I had that pulled. Who, when, when did this come before the Commissioners for permission to apply for this grant?
So, historically, we've not come to the board to ask for permission to apply. We come to the board when it's awarded and you have the option of it.
No, no. Pardon me. Two or three years ago, this business of these sudden bills that popped up came before the board and we set a policy at that time, there would be no grant applications made without prior approval from the board before the grant application was made. So, my next question is who made the grant, grant application?
This is Commissioner.
So, this is a continuation of the original grant. This is phase three of the RCC grant, which we brought to the board. I can go back and look, but this is a continuation of that original grant. Remember, we had our grant that the state gave us all the money to do to look at resiliency. We had the, I think Commissioner Rebols or Commissioner Booth was on the, was on-
What was the first two parts of that then?
It, it was to, it was to look at, to get public input on what they thought was the best method for resiliency. And then, the engineers determined what were hybrid models that could be based upon that. That was sent back to the state. They said, "Okay, we've paid for all that. Now, your next step is to actually do the, or is to design the project. There's no cost to the county in that." And then, the third phase is they have money to where they will pay to implement the project. So, there's no county money in this at all.
So, that was my next question. Who's gonna put up the $500,000 to build a project?
The state is. That's part of the, that was part of the project from the very start. They said that what we would, what they'll do is they, if you remember, they selected several communities. Beaufort County got one, the city of Washington got one, Bell Haven got one, Aurora got one. And it was a process, the, the different levels and they said, "We've got money to do this." I think it's, there's some federal money associated with it that they got to do it for, for resiliency. And the process was start this project, talk to the community, figure out what the community likes, then do a demonstration site and then build, or design a demonstration site and then build a demonstration site. And they're paying for all of it.
This is for resiliency. I have trouble understanding what this project does to promote the future long-term viability of Beaufort County.
What it does is it is supposed to help people and developers understand processes that they can do as they develop properties to make them resilient to flooding and storm events and those kind of things.
Well, look, you know, I do a lot of stormwater work, so, I'm familiar with this. And nobody's yet proven that all these stormwater programs and these mud holes that we go out and design and build actually are worth the money that it costs to build them and the changes in design that you have to do to get them built. I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for this. Far as I'm concerned, this is another useless project of the order that the federal government and the state governments come up with that really don't benefit anybody, but they help a lot of environmentalists get where they think they want to go. They also indoctrinate a lot of people in the school system into believing things that are simply not true. So, this is a useless project. It hurts society, it's harmful to society and it just shouldn't be. And I take your word now, county's not gonna have to put up any money for the construction of whatever this monstrosity that they're gonna build is and I'm familiar with the design for these things, so, I know a little bit about them.
I have a que, I have a question. How many acres is, is gonna be affected?
I don't know the answer to that. I mean, this is the design phase of it. I'm not sure exactly how many acres it covers.
They can do all kinds of things from planting a little strip of weeds along a ditch to a flower bed to all, it can go in about a thousand different ways and you don't know until they design it.
So, I have one more question. The, the money's coming from the state, but there are federal funds coming through the state to, within this project. And the reason I ask is I'm, I'm concerned from a macro point of view that money is, is just flooding into all these systems and who's gonna pay for it? Our children, we, the four trillion dollars spent so far this year from the federal government, that's, I don't even think that includes the budget, which is about 900 billion. And, and it's just getting, it's more and more and more and more and I don't see the benefit from it. That's why if you're, if, to design this is, gosh, $67,000 just for design, then over a half a million to build it and it just seems like a rake off. Now, I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering, is, is that amount of money gonna be for all the towns or is it just for Beaufort Community College?
I don't know what other communities have. I mean, all I know is-
But you were saying that Bell Haven was getting a little piece of Aurora, Washington?
They were awarded RCCP, RCCP grants as well. I'm not sure what their piece is.
So, there could be as much as a million, two million dollars coming to Beaufort County to build these, as Hood calls it, mud holes. I'm sure it's more than that. But in effect, I mean, that's a lot of money to just discover how water travels through the natural process.
Well, let me correct you. It's not to discover how water travel, we know how water travels through the natural process. That's not it. It's the political thing that you have to have stormwater retention and stormwater treatment and that it has to be done as prescribed by the government. So, that, that's, and, and it's never really been proved that these programs are worth the cost.
Yeah.
You know, you could just as easily require that every new development put a trash catcher in for all the water that runs off the property would probably do more good than what we're doing. But at any rate, we get the trash catcher plus a lot of other expense. Any, any other questions before we take a vote? All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right. David, we're down to you. You're gonna talk to us about the noise review, noise ordinance review.
I'm gonna give you a, a review of the Beaufort County noise ordinance. You have seen this, it's, it's attached to your page 233 of, in your book entitled Chapter 92, Noise. Let me, just hear me out for a few things that I've sort of turned up and looking at this. Beaufort County's noise ordinance was passed in 2003, almost 20 years ago. You have a copy of its one and one-quarter pages and that's a little bit of a stretch. It's not quite that long, double spaced. Perhaps Mr. Richardson could fill us in on what brought this about and why this, this particular thing. This is during his era, era, I think, 20 years ago, 19 years ago.
Yeah, well, I hate to tell you, I don't remember a whole lot about why we put it in other than we had, well, I do know part of it. People were having parties, there were saloons and places to serve alcohol.
Desperados.
Desperados, that's right. You got it, yeah.
The man that lives across the street.
Yeah, I forgot about it, yeah.
I was behind it.
But there were, there were other places that there, there were issues.
There was a place out on Slickstone right down the river.
Well, yeah. Whatever the, was going on there, now, I remember- Well, whatever the, was going on there, and I remember Desperados also. But our wonderful noise ordinance makes it unlawful for, quote, "anybody to make, permit, continue, or cause any unreasonably loud and disturbing noise in the county," end the quote. It then seeks to define the words disturbing, unreasonably loud, and sound amplification by stating such interrupts the normal peace and calm of the area. I can't talk. It then provides sound amplification is any sound amplification operated to create sound levels. And then it gives a 55 dB A, 65 dB C. That's nine and to nine, and then nine to nine, they drop it back a little bit. Do we have any of this equipment to measure this stuff? Do you want to know where it is?
Yeah, the sheriff's department had the measuring equipment. As I recall, it cost about $5,000 to buy the unit. And it's like a lot of the toys the sheriff's department gets. They're not really there after a year or two, they're gone. So.
Well, I've never seen it. I've never seen it being used. And they certainly don't set it up on the road here when they go by my office between five.
That's right. And I've got the same problem where they come by your office, and then they go by mine. And that's what I've been complaining about with noise, that we need to do something that's effective. But the ordinance was drawn two different ways. One was the technology way with measuring decibels. And the other way is the sentence that says noise which is perceived by a person of ordinary sensibilities. So if somebody's making noise outside your house, you don't have to go buy a decibel meter to bring charges against them. You can go down and say they're disturbing the peace, and they're disturbing me, and they're making loud noises, and you could probably get a warrant. And since this has come up this way, we have a farmer in the county who, within the last couple of weeks, has run into this, deer eating his crops. And he put up a noise cannon, and the neighbors have given him a really hard time. They came and took a warrant out on him for violating this particular ordinance. And of course, farmers, we never intended to impact people that were protecting crops. We've had one incidents, that incident that happened with a noise cannon. Since then, it came to the commissioners, and that was a place on the south side of the river that grew produce. And they put up a noise cannon to keep birds and things from eating their produce, and the neighbors fussed about that. Yeah, I don't know how that was finally settled. But after it came before the commissioners a couple of times, it sort of went away. How was it settled?
After the man that wanted to buy the property got, they put Desperado out of business, and there wasn't no more complaints, and didn't nobody else say anything else about this noise ordinance. Am I correct?
You're correct.
Nobody else said anything. This, see, what happened was, when you look at it, you're right on the machine that you measured the noise, you went to the person's house that was making the noise. You didn't go to the complaining. You went to the house that was making the noise. You remember, yeah. So then it just died on the vine after this guy died.
But the paragraph, the single-sentence paragraph in there that says about noise which is perceived by a person, that allows people, if they are being put upon, to do something about it. We did have one more instance, which involved a perception. And that was down off Cox's Crossroads on Broadbury, where houses were side by side. And one guy left, played loud music from like 10 o'clock at night till 2:00 in the morning, kept his neighbors away. I don't know how that one was settled either, but word of that got to the commissioners. But I will say that commissioners that I know of never intended for farmers to be put upon as part of protecting their crops.
Well, I will say to you, that's on the top, you've got my little memo that I did about this. I said with no hesitation, I state this ordinance is unconstitutional and unenforceable. And it really is. I mean, looking at it both ways. The only that's going to happen is you might scare somebody into doing something that you wanted to get done, but that's, that's it. If this had to go up, they're not going to enforce that.
Well, the city just did an ordinance within the last few months. So we might want to take a look at their ordinance, or you may already have. It's in here. It's in there. Oh, okay.
I gave you a copy of that. I suggest you read it. It's, as far as these things go, I think it's excellent. They had some help getting it done, and they've updated it already this year from a previous one. It's, it's, it's as, it's as good as you're going to find one of these things. Now, does that mean it's always going to be successful? I don't, I don't know the answer to that. Also, I would recommend to you, Pitt Council, Pitt County has a noise ordinance, and it was amended this year, also April the 4th of this year. And it's, it's shorter. It's only about eight pages, six, seven, eight. It has decibel levels also. It's, it's better written than the one that we had, and it's about three or four times longer, even at eight pages. So that's, we don't have, we don't have an enforceable ordinance. That's my, that's the bottom line.
Well, I think if that's the case, we need to take a look at doing another ordinance. And I don't have a problem with using, I haven't read these, I guess I just got them today. But I don't have a problem with taking a look at both of these and picking one and modeling on it. I don't want something that was going to cause a problem for farmers. We need to, we need to find a way to allow people to run their businesses where they have to use noise without that being a serious problem.
Agree with that.
So if, if you could bring that back in a couple of months and let us take a look, the board maybe study it in the meantime, see what we need to do. I have a particular problem with motorcycles, because people come by with motorcycles that are just hummers. They're just fine. And other people come by me seeing how much noise they can make with the thing. That's a problem. We also have the same kind of problem with automobiles. It's the same way.
Well, let me, let me share just a couple more things that I meant to say. You talk about, we have a general statute, 2128, exhaust system and emissions control devices. And it says, "No person shall have a motor vehicle on a highway unless such motor vehicle is equipped with a muffler." Well, that's clear enough. "Or other exhaust system of the type installed at the time of manufacture, in good working order and constant operation to prevent excessive or unusual noise, annoying smoke and smoke screens." Few holes in that perhaps. And then B says, "It shall be unlawful to use a muffler cutout or on any motor vehicle upon a highway." Then C says, "No motor vehicles registered in this state that are, that was manufactured after model year 1967 shall be operated in this state unless it is equipped with emissions control devices that were installed on the vehicle at the time the vehicle was manufactured, and these devices are properly connected." Then it says on D, "The requirements of C," which is the one I just read, "shall not apply if the emissions control devices have been removed for purposes of converting the motor vehicle on natural liquefied petroleum gas." Well, you know, it seems to me in reading that, everybody has to, once a year, got to take their car in, have it inspected, and you, and you get a little sticker goes on your license. How many times do they check your muffler? I mean, these ones that go by here either don't have mufflers, or they've already been replaced.
Beaufort County's only safety. We're a safety-only inspection. We don't, we don't do, we don't do emissions.
Pitt County do emissions.
Well, the statute is a little different, and it seems to me, they're not, the inspections could be picking up on these things and making people replace their noisy mufflers, or lack of saying. I've got one guy in a pickup truck that goes by fairly, several times a week, goes right down Third Street. He had got the first muffler on that thing. I mean, it is just horribly loud, and he's just a big grin on his face. So he's, he's enjoying himself.
That one you can enforce, but the loud muffler you can't enforce. I mean, if he, you got down with the muffler.
But I'm not going to go out and tackle him. I mean, somebody's going to have to.
And you won't get a conviction. I don't care who tackled him, you won't get a conviction. I mean, it's just one of those things nowadays. And like you said, it's just put in there for a placeholder, because those guys really, they really, I mean, when you.
If you put any type muffler up there, it's a manufactured muffler. There's nothing you can do now. But you can't take a car in Beaufort County, I mean, in Pitt County, live over there and get it inspected, because you got to have emission controls. Some cars, when you, the statute that you're reading is talking about the catalytic converter. If you take the catalytic converter off, you have violated that policy.
But you've got to check it.
That's right. In the county, which.
Right, right.
Emissions control devices.
Okay, we're, I'm confused. If we want him to come back, with, are we asking for an updated ordinance policy? Well, I think I am. Well, I guess, hearing what I've heard, I mean, if there's no way to enforce it, why have we got to update it? I mean, are we going to be able to come up with one that's going to be enforceable?
I don't know how portable these, these sound things are. Seems to me you've got to catch a vehicle, you know, and then be able to prove by observation or some type of a printout that they violated the statute, then take them to court.
Do you think, do you think it's going to go on the court? Knock it, David? You think?
I think probably it's a 50-50 situation.
Well, I think we're talking a lot more than just vehicles.
Oh, yeah, you're talking about loud bands and all kinds of stuff. Yeah, and big boos. I'm, I'm centering on vehicles, because it's the one area I think we could try to control. But I'm not sure about that.
So since we don't have enough enforceable ordinance, do.
Turn your mic, turn your mic off.
Do towns and municipalities have to come in and get a variance, which they do from time to time?
Well, they do, because the ordinance hasn't been knocked down, and the commissioners haven't changed the ordinance or rescinded the ordinance. So as long as it's standing, yeah, they do. But whether it's enforceable or not is another question for a court, not for.
Well, we have a page and a couple of lines that's not, not even attempted to be enforced. You did say that somebody taken somebody to court, and we don't know the result.
Well, no, he goes to court in a couple of months. This just happened in the last couple of weeks. So, but back to the ordinance. I mean, I think just, just summarizing this, that we should, when we talk about this again, we should talk about how the, how the state laws and regulations affect the use of mufflers and affect these machines. And we might be better off to push for, as somebody has said, better enforcement from people who are doing the inspections in the county. And we might look at whether we can even impose and have our own ordinance that says you're going to check for loud mufflers, or you're going to check mufflers when you do this thing to see whether they're original equipment or not. Yeah, we might be, think about that. But also, if you say that this is not an enforceable ordinance, which I've heard that before, that we, we really need to take a look at reworking it. Because if we don't have something, we're going to wind up with some problems, and that's what we were having before. And that's why we got into the ordinance to begin with. So, yeah, I think in a couple of months, give you a couple of months, and we read these ordinances that you presented us with, and then we come back and see what you recommend.
Okay. David, I guess I'm not as concerned about the vehicles. I mean, I know you all have that experience here in Washington, but you've got, you've got a city ordinance that takes care of that. You've got a state law that takes care of that. I think the bigger issue is going to be the other stuff that prompted this to begin with, which was the loud bands and. And other stuff going on.
Back when this was first done, vehicles were not put of the equation at all.
That's right.
They were not.
It's gotten worse. But some people are.
Some people are abusive with vehicles. For some reason, it massages their ego for them to ride around and aggravate everybody else. Okay, David, you got your instructions?
Two meetings, right.
Okay, two meetings from now. All right, we're down to the manager's report. Brian, you want to bring us up to date on their strategic plan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, had a meeting on August the 23rd with Kevin Leonard, who is the executive director of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. And they've agreed to work with us as the board requested. And they've scheduled an opportunity on October the 26th and 27th. It'll be a full day and a half day, and his desire would be to send out some information ahead of time, and to get some feedback, and then bring that to the board during those, during that day and a half session.
Okay, you want to go to the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant?
Yes, you'd be glad to. It's a pretty detailed explanation in the agenda item. This is regarding Hurricane Florence. As you can see through the detail, there was a request that was brought to the board. It was approved to opt-in to the State Hazard Mitigation Centric Plan, and that is where the state of North Carolina actually manages those programs in the individual projects and the county steps out of that role. We used to have to manage that ourselves. As you can see, the board voted 7-0 to do that. So for the original request that was put in back in 19, under Florence, it was approved. You'll see the request from the state. We simply have to sign off on this to allow the funds, to allow the project to move forward. The state will take care of handling the project itself. The COG is going to be the one that handles the local work. And this is for an acquisition and demolition of 19 properties within the city of Washington. And the city of Washington has agreed to accept those properties at the end of the project, so that we are not cutting grass in the city of Washington.
Now, are there other projects in the county? Did I see that in here, or did I miss it?
There, there may be some additional projects later. This is the first batch. There may be some out in the county. I don't know the entire listing of the properties. I think they're still working through some of those. This was the first batch through this agreement. They came forward, and there are 19 of them. All of these are in the city of Washington.
Brian, somebody fill me in. Where is Heritage Drive?
It's out on Minuteman Lane.
Yeah. This, the street that goes back to the. Yeah. To give you the long and the short of this, and I'm going to say some things here that are going to upset some people before it's over with. This is a project that was slab-on-grade construction that the city blew when they permitted it. We had a flood ordinance when this was permitted, and there was a good buddy system where these guys got away with building this stuff too low. The city ought to have to eat this instead of the rest of the taxpayers, because this is their boondoggle. And it is unbelievable at how bad the project was messed up. And also, for the record, while I'm here, I'm not going to vote for this county to take any properties that we have to mow the grass on forever, or that are we going to put into useless use forever. Because, you know, we can restrict the properties if you have to without us owning them. And FEMA, if FEMA doesn't want to do that, then we don't want them. Why would we do that?
These houses on Heritage Drive, are those the one that it was, a couple of years ago when this product, when this was brought about? Are those the one that they was talking about demolishing?
They flooded during Florence.
Yeah, they flooded.
And they had repetitive flooding, so they went forward. These are actually flood insurance program projects. These are not general taxpayer projects. And so, yes, these will be, these were submitted for demolition and removal and leaving it green space so that it can never, so they'll never have to pay insurance claims on them again.
Do the owner have the option, the option to opt out?
I'm sorry?
Does the owner of these properties have the options to opt out?
The owner of the property's requested that they be put in initially.
Well, why did, well, the reason I'm asking, a few of them I know of has just had some major, major overhaul. I mean, it is major.
So, I mean, my understanding is you can go to them. So, I mean, my understanding is you can go to them and say, the project was approved, we'd like to acquire and demolish it, and they can say no. The property owner can say no. But they're not, I don't think they're gonna pay flood insurance claims on them moving forward.
Entertained a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding and also the authorization to the finance director to sign, well, to sign the memorandum of understanding. Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those posed. Okay. All right, we're down to the agenda items. Commissioner Richardson.
What page are you on?
We're on page 268. They're all right together.
That's the Chaco Innity. Look, the Chaco Innity thing and the rumor mill is what's going on with that. Can't be too very specific, other than there's been a problem over there that involves handling money. But back to what the finance director was doing. Didn't you have something in here about approving the contract for audit? Your, the write-up said something about audit standards? Who were gonna discuss audit standards and fraud?
Well, my intention and my hope was that I would have time to put together a presentation for you tonight on how we go about safeguarding our county funds and some of our internal control documentation. But time did not allow that for me. I had four staff here on Friday out of a normal staff of 11 folks. And so, I was taking up water payments Friday instead of doing a presentation.
So, is that, this has been pulled from tonight's agenda? Is that what you're saying?
I had volunteered as a courtesy to try to answer some of your questions, to do a presentation.
No, I'm talking about the item right now that you had on the agenda earlier that we apparently skipped.
We didn't skip it. I was going to try to do a presentation on our internal controls as part of my finance reporting. I did not have a chance to work on that this past week.
Right, so you pulled it from the agenda tonight?
I unvolunteered myself from doing it, yes.
Okay.
But she's gonna still try to have it ready at the next meeting, her presentation.
That's fine, that's fine. Well, what I'm getting at here is, how do we know, based upon our audit procedure, that the county doesn't have money in the Chaco Innity, Town and Chaco Innity Situation and the Chaco Innity Fire Department and the Chaco Innity EMS Department? How do we know that our funds have not been tampered with?
I mean, we send the tax dollars to the town based on the tax authority that's for the fire or for the EMS. That's the only thing we send over there. And the municipal taxes, I mean.
Well, we said, yeah, how do we know that money is, how do we know that that money is properly spent?
I mean, we don't, that would be the responsibility of the governing board of Town and Chaco Innity.
I don't think so. I beg to heartily disagree. If I'm sitting up here taking money from the taxpayer and I'm sending it to another taxing authority or another authority that's spending it, I have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that that money is properly spent.
So, the taxing authority under the fire and the EMS, you're correct. The city taxes are not your taxes. They're the city.
I don't disagree. And there's also, I understand, a fire department, another fire department that's involved in this.
I'm not aware of that. I had been notified by our acting emergency services director that he was informed by the fire chief that the office of state marshal, the office of state fire marshal was coming in within the next two weeks to inspect and take a look at the fire department books and that a representative from the state auditor's office would be with them. So, that sounds like to me they're looking into that.
Right. All right, how do, now, look, I'm gonna go back into the history of this thing a little bit. Because about four or five years ago, I asked for this county to do a forensic audit of the Chaco Innity situation in order to make sure that our funds were being adequately handled and properly spent. I did not even get a second on this board to do that. And now, we have a situation come up in which case our funds may have been improperly spent. So, my question is, number one, when we send funds out, we need to make sure that those funds are properly spent. And number two, how are we gonna recover the taxpayers' money if they have been improperly spent?
So, we get, we get an audit, we get a compilation or an audit from our fire and EMS folks that show where the money they got from the taxing authority, where it was spent, their expenses. So, we see that each year. I mean, without, without, and I know that that conversation was pretty, was held pretty in-depth with this board at one time, where you said, do you wanna make them do an audit of that? And there was a pushback because of the cost of doing an audit every year. And the board said, no, we don't wanna make them do that because of that. So, I mean, I don't know how to answer that question.
Well, I, as a commissioner who's using the police power of the state to take money away from people, understand that I have a responsibility to see to that's properly spent. This board has never been willing to do a forensic audit of any kind to make sure that there was fraud anywhere. And I have explained to you over and over, although I realize you thoroughly disrespect my abilities in finance, how corporations do things like this. They don't audit everybody every year. They pick specific areas and they target those areas or those places or those cost centers. So, you have the same cost, you're only paying for one forensic audit every year when you're audited. But you sort of put, pull the name out of a hat as to who's gonna be it this year. Or you select them based on, we've been having problems over there, so we need to go there and take a look. This county is not doing that. We're sitting here right now as a county, based on recommendations that have been made by you and the finance officer in the past, that we don't need to look at this. We don't need the audit. We just dump the money and run. That is not the way it is supposed to be. So, what are we gonna do about this?
So, Commissioner Richardson, a couple of things. Yes, we do disagree occasionally on finances because there is a difference in business financing and government financing. There's a difference.
Thievery is still thievery.
I'm not saying that. I'm talking about the way books are done. And we do disagree with that. I'll admit to that. But you seem to be attacking me over something that this, that you just said this board didn't vote to do. I don't have the authority to go do anything this board doesn't direct me to do. So, if the Board of Commissioners wants to do that, if there's a majority vote to do that, we're happy to do whatever the board directs us to do. But you seem to be attacking me for something that I have no control over.
Amen.
You do have some control over it because you make recommendations as to how we should be auditing the money that we collect. And you have never made a recommendation that we take a look at fraud. I have asked in the past, I've always got pushback. But I'm willing to leave that for the moment and.
No, no, no. Let's don't leave that because I wanna be clear that I am all about making sure there's not any fraud. So, don't accuse me of not doing that.
Well, then, why haven't you done something to ensure that there's not fraud? You just told us.
This board has never told us to do that.
No, yeah, see, you're running in a circle, Brian, and it's not going to work.
You're the one running in a circle. You just said this board never, would never vote to do that.
You just told us that you had no responsibility to do that and that we shouldn't be doing that. That was at the beginning of the conversation.
No, 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 no. Look, guys, we're gonna have a discussion. And I would, I would ask that you, one of you, or David, talk with the state auditor's office that has the authority to come in and do those sort of things. If they do this for a county, in other words, if the commissioners voted and said, we want the state auditors to come in and trace our money, go into anybody, whether it's Chaco Innity or whether it's Bath or whether it's Pintown, I mean, whoever it is, to see if they do that on some random basis. We're, you know, we engage them and say, we want you to check and we'll give you, we'll draw that name out and we'll do it. I don't know that they do that, but I'd like for you to follow up and ask.
The state auditor will do that only when they have information that leads to wrongdoing. That's why they're accompanying the fire marshal to Chaco Innity. But what I'm saying is, how do you know, as the finance officer in charge of this money and the manager in charge of this money, that the money that we collect and we write checks to people to, to various organizations, how do you know it's being properly spent?
Because they're providing a service. I mean, the overall picture on that is, we gave them 200, here's rough, no, okay, say we gave them a half a million dollars. If they show us expenses of a half a million dollars in debt service on ambulances, paying people on ambulances, whatever, buying fuel, then they've demonstrated to us that they spent those funds for those purposes. They show us that every year.
Fine, then you need to write me a check for a half a million dollars and I'm going out and provide some service for the county. And I'm gonna give you back a piece of paper that's gonna tell you that I spent it properly. That's what you're saying. Now, we're all big boys. People steal money when they're in important positions. So, we need, as a county, and I'll direct this since you're out of it, you've cleansed yourself from all responsibility. So, I'll direct this to the board. How is this board gonna make sure that when we dump money and write these big checks to these various organizations, that there's no fraud in that organization? What are you gonna do about it? You turned down the audit that would've discovered this five or six years ago. So, tell me what you're gonna do. How are you protecting the public from thievery?
Hi, John?
Based on the fact that a county can only do what the state legislature has given them the authorization to do, I don't know that we're authorized to do that.
Oh, that's totally wrong, John. That is really third grade thinking. The law says we have a, you as a commissioner have a fiduciary responsibility, and you don't know this, but under certain conditions, you can be made to dig in your pocket and pay money.
Yes, you can.
That you did not look after.
Yeah.
So, you, you tell me, that's saying that we, that we're gonna sit here and let people steal from us is the wrong thing to say.
I'm not saying that either. I'm just asking if you've got the authority to do that.
Yes, you have the authority.
You show me.
If you give somebody the cash money.
No, no, that's not, that's not what I'm asking.
Plenty of law, okay, I'll have you an answer at the next meeting. You're picking here.
I am fully supportive.
This is totally juvenile, asking whether we have the authority to follow money that we give to people. We do. There's plenty of lawsuits. I'll tell you what you do. You call the state auditor's office and ask them, see what they tell you. You call the local government commission and ask them and see what they tell you.
I'll do that.
Okay, I think we need to back up just one second and recognize that when we get the audit from whoever it is, it's like, it's like Brian said, if we give them $250,000 and they've got $250,000 worth of expenses or debt service, they've used that money. The problem comes in, that is the operating statement. But when money flows into Chaco Innity or Pintown or anybody else and grant money from other places, that's cash that goes into the bank, that's on the balance sheet. And, you know, that's where a lot of the fraud is because there is no accountability for a lot of the grants. They don't go back and follow it and ask for an audit. So, anyway, let's go, let's go to your next item. Sales tax money for the school discussion.
Well, I wanna, before we leave this item, I wanna say to this board, what are you gonna do to protect the public from fraud in the handling and use of money that we fund these various institutions to? It's not just what we give to the fire departments and things. You give $600,000, $700,000 a year to these various good buddy, your favorite charities that get you votes.
Yeah, and one of them, one of them is your favorite library, which we spend almost half of the money goes to the libraries.
You give money to these people and you are absolutely clueless as to how it's spent.
Yeah.
It's like I said, we do have the power to tax. I mean, police power, it's awesome authority. We also have the power for oversight. I mean, it's a dual, a dual process that we really should do. Now, we can perform oversight to the, to the limit we wish to perform that oversight. And I'm sure there's some stumbling blocks and we can be stopped at some point. But then again, we might be able to push through those. Somebody has got to mind the store and look after the taxpayer. And right now, locally, we're that guy. So, I mean, we can't expect our bureaucrats to do it. We have to do it. We have to ask them to do it as a group. If we ask them to do it as a group, they will do that. So, I really think the weight of this problem, if, should there be a problem, is upon us.
Okay, we're gonna get to the next item. Sales tax money for school discussion.
Well, Anita brought us up to date, Anita brought us up to date a few minutes ago with the exact amount of money of apparent underpayment that we have made to the school board for capital. And a couple of months ago when this came up, what this board voted to do was to set this money aside. And in setting the money, and let the school board tell us what they wanted to do with it. What we did when we did that, I didn't think about this until I got home, but what we did when we did that was we increased their capital budget by $547,000. We appropriated $547,000 of additional spending. So, my question is, and maybe you can enlighten me on this, is the $547,000 gonna be taken as a credit against next year's budget?
Taken as a credit. So, that money at June 30th rolled into fund balances, excess sales tax revenue that rolled into fund balance at June 30th. So, on our June 30th audit, we will show a reserve for the $547,000 for school capital of that fund balance.
Okay. When is that money gonna be spent?
Whenever they come before us and ask for it.
That's what you said a while ago, and that reinforces what I'm saying. What we did is we increased the school capital spending by $547,000. Now, one of the things that this board has been doing, well, if they came next meeting and told us how they wanted to spend it, would we appropriate it?
Yes, out of fund balance. And the law says we have to give them that money.
Yeah, but the law doesn't say we can't take that as a credit against what we've already given them this year. It's capital money.
No, you're, that's not correct. It is a calculation. If you go back to my presentation, it's a straight calculation. We owe them 30% of whatever we get in Article 40 sales tax. We owe them 60% in whatever we get in Article 42 sales tax. We have to give them that, that year or either reserve it for them for school capital.
Well, of what we got in that year now, we're doing, we're doing funny business with the bookkeeping.
No, we're not.
Yes, we are. Let me explain, well, let me explain it to you.
Okay.
Okay. You took a credit into this first quarter of the fiscal year that we're in.
I'm not taking a credit into anything. I've not done that.
Would you mind letting me finish?
Sure.
You took a credit of the $547,000 in this quarter against funds that were collected in the last quarter of last year as sales taxes. Now, wait a minute. Yes, you did too.
Oh, you did.
He didn't take it.
Yes, you did too. Listen, when sales taxes come in for the fourth quarter of last year, what do you credit that tax revenue against?
So, sales tax runs three months behind.
That's right.
We get our April sales tax in July, we get our May sales tax in August, and we just got our June sales tax in September. And generally accepted accounting principles and the governmental accounting standards board says that those July, August, and September sales tax collections have to be accrued back as a revenue in the prior year.
Oh, wow. Well, why isn't the $547,000 of capital, which the money only came in during that period, accrued back against last year's capital spending?
It's going to be shown as reserve fund balance.
I'm sorry, but you are wrong.
Okay.
You are just wrong. And I would like for the auditors, would you please have our auditors to call me about this? Because this is an exception to the audit. You cannot, on one hand, count that money one way and then count it favorably another way. on one hand, count that money one way and then count it favorably another way. It's wrong. It's, it is inconsistent accounting.
Commissioner Richardson, um, our finance officer, certified finance officer, and she does know what she's talking about.
Everybody makes mistakes.
I'm not saying everybody doesn't make mistakes. I'm saying that we're doing it the way we're required to do by the government standards.
And I'm saying that you're not. Please have the auditors call me.
Okay. And when they tell you that we are doing it correctly, will you please come back to this board and tell them you were incorrect?
Yeah, I will. And let's go back to something that we need to understand about auditors. The softest funny money, hand shaking thing that goes on is these government audits. Because the government audits are for no purpose but other than to make the people at the top, the bureaucrats, feel good that everything's been done correctly. And there's not, it's not really a fierce audit. It's, it's a soft audit of the worst kind.
Can I respond to that?
You can.
I disagree with that. First of all, I couldn't tell you what half the auditors that audit our books look like. They're from Whiteville, never met them in person in my life. So, they're not gonna do me or Brian a personal favor by giving us a favorable audit and put their license at risk that they worked so hard to get. That's number one. Number two, we've had some bad audits. It was before I came. When I came, there were 13 audit findings in our audit report. Very bad audit. And I've managed to put together with the manager's support, a great team, and we have cleaned all that up. We've had zero audit findings for the last four years. I expect we'll have zero again this year. And, you know, I, I don't understand why you don't have confidence in what I'm doing, but I'm not sure what I can do to make you change your mind about that. But I'm happy to put you in contact with the auditor so you can have a conversation with them.
Thank you. The next item, let's see, jail, is the supervision of jail. You know, I know we've got, we're gonna have a new sheriff coming in shortly, and he can probably do something to take care of this. We have too many deaths in the jail. Uh, and we have, as the last, uh, thing that the state did with the death was, these people were not supervised. We're paying for a lot of people to supervise people in the jail. We're paying for two full-time nurses, and we still have people dying in jail. We need to, we need to take a hard look as commissioners, because these lawsuits are getting, and paying out this money is, uh, from the sheriff's department is, from, with lawyers, has become a very expensive thing. And we're gonna keep paying it, it looks like. So, I don't know what we can do. Maybe we need to invite the chief deputy or the sheriff to come to the next meeting and tell us how they're supervising people in the jail, because it looks to me like there's not much supervising going on in the jail. Because how can you have two nurses in there 24 hours and you still have people dying from such things as infections? I'm not talking about heart attacks, or he got electrocuted while he was in jail, or whatever, serious accidents, hazardous accidents. I'm talking about medical conditions that should easily be detected by a medical professional. So, we need to think about this, and it may be more prudent, I'm willing to wait for the new sheriff to come and tell us what he's doing to improve the jail. But it's, it's hard for me to, uh, it's hard for me to understand these things. Our insurance people are just shaking in their boots because they don't know when the next claim's gonna come.
You want to go to illegal drugs in Beaufort County?
Well, back on illegal drugs in Beaufort County. We still have crack babies being born in Beaufort County. Uh, we still have a lot of drugs in Beaufort County. Uh, I understand the sympathy end of this that we heard earlier tonight from the Board of Health, uh, being in here of, oh, we have to treat these people nice, and we have to try to help them and all that. That's the human thing to do. That's fine if you wanna look at it that way. But we have to find a way to control drugs in this country. There is so much money in drugs. You can't tell me that there are not people out here who make their living from the drug industry, who are not supporting drugs, even though they may not be selling them. One-third of our police force is there because of drugs. One-third of social services is there because of drugs. There are a lot of the legal community that make a living because of drugs. This stuff is still coming in here. We've shut down, as the district attorney told us, 60-something prisons in the last 10 years. We have a mamby-pamby, hand-slapping approach to people who are caught selling drugs and using drugs. We are not tough enough on them. And I've asked this board over and over, let's please form a committee to lobby the state of North Carolina, to get tougher drug laws and to build more prisons. The judges all tell me the same thing. If you make the penalty stiff enough for selling drugs, people will stop selling drugs. So, what does this board want to do about drugs? Are you willing to lobby the legislature to stop, to increase the penalties for, for people who are selling drugs?
I, I'll tell you, when we were up there, uh, I brought the subject up before Representative Kidwell, and the state's posture is gonna be to spend all the money they can on preventative. Uh, I don't think there's any lobbying that you're gonna be able to do to build another 60 prisons across the state. But, uh, the, the budget that's allocated, I think that they will spend more money to do, uh, preventive stuff, and hopefully, they will spend more money that fits in with what we talked about tonight, where you're actually doing something on a case-by-case basis.
It's too late. After they're addicted to drugs, the best thing to do is stop them from ever getting drugs to begin with. And that's what I'm saying. The solution to this thing is to stop the sale of illegal drugs. So, I'll have a motion at the next meeting, and we'll let you guys vote against it. Vote it down, and we'll keep going. But treating the individual after they are, after they are sick on drugs and addicted to drugs, that is a backwards way of combating this problem. It is totally backwards, and I understand that the touchy-feely people like that because it gives, oh, it makes more jobs. Gee, I didn't think about that. It makes more jobs. Isn't that great? The drug industry will destroy this country if we don't destroy it.
Mr. Richardson, I understand exactly what you're saying. Uh, we cannot make legislators, build more prisons. And Frankie's correct, they're more looking at the, they're looking at the preventive side of it. I heard that rumor is too. But I'll tell you what we can do right here tonight. We can build a jail and hold them in there long. We can't build a prison, but we can, the commissioners can do that. Or we can build a prison here in Beaufort County.
Well, here's the problem. That doesn't combat, that only combats Beaufort County. We're talking about a state problem. We can only hold them six months, and they're turned over to the state anyway. So, the only way that we can give it to the state, arrested a drug dealer for six months is a slap on the wrist. He'll do that, stand at that time standing on his head. I'm talking about sending him off for 10 years with no opportunity of getting out early. That takes more prisons. When you make the Senate's tough enough, they'll stop. Look at the countries that have been destroyed by drugs. China, the Indonesian, the Middle East countries, of Thailand, and in that area, they all have drug laws that give you death for selling drugs. Okay? I'm not, I'm not so sure I don't advocate that. When I see the people and the lives that have been destroyed by the evil of drugs, it's time for normal people to get up and start doing something about it, instead of sitting around saying, oh gee, it's awful. We just throw some more money at it and make some more jobs, and everything will go away. That is not what we're elected to do. We need to be talking to the legislature. And yes, we can't make the legislature do anything, but we can sure shame them into doing something. And if we start the process, the people that I talk to across a lot of other counties are standing in the wings, waiting for somebody to step forward and start the process so that we can do something about it. The attitude that we can't do anything about it is a give-up attitude, and that, we should not have that attitude about this problem. It is too serious.
I'd like to follow up with that. It, it's almost like, um, the federal government should be involved, because it's, these drugs are across the state line. The federal government is not involved right now, and we've got a problem with that. Uh, going to the state legislature is good for one reason and one reason only, in my opinion, right now. It won't be to build prisons. It's gonna be for them to advocate with, with politicians as they know, from both sides of the aisle, to stop this. And we, helping people on an individual basis, that's wonderful. But right now, we have a tsunami of drugs in this country. And they are cheap, they're readily available, and as long as that happens, you're gonna have more and more people not only getting on drugs, but dying from drugs that are very powerful, and they're not used to that kind of a drug. This is not back in the days of the hippies. This is now, it's, it's life and death for little children who are trying something for the very first time. And, and we've got to stop it. I really think there's a concerted effort of China and Mexico and certain people in the federal government who want to create a, a society of chaos. And right now, we're at that chaotic state. We have hit rock bottom as a republic. And we've got to ask other politicians to join us, because we care. We care more than they do. That's our line. Well, hey, this time, we care more than they do.
Okay. Uh, we're down to you, Commissioner DeFric. The first one is request for a public health update.
Yeah, uh, I would like to get back to that, even if we do it on a bi-monthly basis. Uh, that might be what we need to do. Uh, right now, there's about 460 people dying in the United States a week now. That's not a great total. Some people say, if, if that many people are dying, it's, it's a tragedy. Yeah, it is a tragedy. We have more people dying, about three times more people die of fentanyl every week in the United States. But, right now, we are at a lull, because, uh, I've looked at a, a chart, and it, it waves, like a sine wave. And right now, we're at low ebb because it's warm. That, that chart's gonna change as the winter months come in. And we keep hearing about the different variants. We hear about monkeypox. I just want our health director to keep us informed of what's going on, even if it's on a bi-monthly basis, even if he only spends 15 minutes with us and maybe not 30. I just want to know. I think it's something we need to know, and we need to talk about. I, I know there's a political problem with the CDC that, and, and it really wasn't about the science. It was about the politics, and all of a sudden, the politics looked bad, so they just stopped it right there. And it happened, ironically, after, a lot of us had spent time in Washington DC, where you could not go in a restaurant unless you showed them your triple Vax card. You, you had to wear a mask everywhere, and then all of a sudden, it's over. COVID's been, you know, cured.
Do you, do you want to make, do you want to make a motion on-
I made a motion that we ask our health director to come in on a bi-monthly basis and, and just talk to us.
Okay.
And for a while. And if COVID goes away, fine, but let's just pursue the information for now.
Okay. As a secondor for that motion, let me ask you this, Stan.
Yeah.
Can he not have to make a personal appearance every two months, but the months that he can't come, just give us a report?
A report.
Give us a report. Right now, we get a lot of reports in here on a monthly basis, but every two months, that, that would take care of it.
But when he comes in here and he puts stuff on the screen, that's for the public.
Yeah.
That's more for the public than it's for us. And, I mean, I, everybody in my family's been sick, and almost everybody. I didn't get sick ironically, but in the last few months, Hood got sick. I mean, it's, it's going around again.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Is this good?
What?
Well, you voted it down, so it's not moot.
Well, I-
I mean, he's, he's providing, I mean, I didn't ask for it. I don't know whether-
I would like more. I would like it for the public. I mean, I'm in that focus.
Okay, you want to go to your next item, uh, government bid process?
Yeah, um, right now, we just, we just had our budget process in Beaufort County. We, we spent more money. We raised, uh, spending in Beaufort County at the highest rate we've ever done. We can credit the economy for that. We can credit-
I, I thought this was on the bid process.
Let me, let me get into that, please. Let me get-
Please get right to the nitty-gritty of the bid process and your concerns.
I got it. I got it.
I mean, I've heard all the overall economic stuff. I just want to know what, what you want to do about the bid.
Could you like to do this for me?
No, I want you to get right to the, get right to the bid stuff.
Okay, well, please, I wouldn't do this if you were presenting something. So, please, let me finish my, at least my first sentence, and then I'm moving to the second sentence, and I might do a third, maybe a fourth, if you please. Stay quiet. I appreciate it. I do like to set things up, and it's part of-
Oh, yeah, there's no doubt about that. Here again, here again, get to the meat of it. Get to the meat of it.
Well, I, we, okay, you want me to get to the meat?
Yeah.
Don't discuss it?
Yeah, go right to it. Go right to it. No.
I know you're gonna vote for this, so I'll get straight to the meat of it. Uh, I think we should have a, a bid process that's more transparent here in Beaufort County. I have four simple tenets, and I think if we follow those four simple tenets, we will have a, a more transparent bid process. Now, some of you may disagree with this, some of you may agree, but right now, we are washing money in Beaufort County. And it's a, we are washing money on, at a national level too. And money is being spent in a frivolous manner all over. Now, maybe I have a different policy and thought process than you guys, maybe not. Maybe you guys will join me on this. But we absolutely need to be transparent in our local bids. Now, I have four tenets. Open the bids at meetings on camera. Uh, bid proposals shall not be prepared by any of the subject bidders. They should not have any, any input. That should be done by our professionals. Lord knows we got enough of them. They should be able to do it on their own. Advertisement bids must be broadcast widely. Should be on the website and all local and regional media. That will accept it. There are people who will accept those bids, and that needs to be put out. That, that needs to go to the media in a formal press release, and that be put out. And in fairness to all bidders and the public at large, many of whom are taxpaying constituents, the lowest qualified bid must be accepted unless the bid bidder is disqualified for just cause. In the event of a relative tie bid, the bid would be awarded to the local bidder. Four simple tenets. We should all agree to this.
I don't even know what number two means.
Because of Congress.
Well, you don't know what that means?
Yeah.
Bid proposals shall not be prepared in any part of any subject bidder. You know, you know how lobbyists-
Bid proposal, that is happening.
You know how lobbyists go and they write legislation? You know, when a bid, when somebody sources out their product, and they, they get it so specialized that few people can bid on it?
Yeah.
Okay, this is what this is talking, I'm talking about.
Well, I mean, it, it, what it, how do you, from a legal standpoint, what, how do you define just cause?
Vote it down.
You kind of have to figure it out at some point. But just, give your case a point. There's somebody came in here about drag, dragging a creek.
Yeah, yeah.
Hood had a, had a problem with them not taking a load of bitter. He, he asked them specifically to give ju, to tell why they wouldn't do it. And, uh, they did in a, in a roundabout way, but they, that needs to be discussed. It needs to be discussed publicly. These things should not be done behind closed doors.
As qualified bidder, that's, that gets you right to the heart of it.
Yeah.
Qualified or not. If you're not qualified, they shouldn't even be bidding.
Don't, don't we have a policy that we, the board approves, so we'd have to go back and amend?
No, ain't a minimum.
Amend anything?
If we don't have a policy somewhat like this, we got a bad policy. I'll tell you that right now. Either we got a good policy or a bad policy. At least.
Brian?
You do have a policy that's written in compliance with the state law. So, I mean, we're happy to go back. If the board wants to take this offline and, and look at stuff and make some changes. But it's gotta be very methodical the way you do it, because when you say, when you say things like, um, qualified bid, that's, that may not be the language that's in the statute. We have to go back to the statute. It's lowest responsive responsible bidder. Can't say qualified bidder. Lowest responsible responsive bidder. So, there's lots of laws that are associated with this. So, we're happy to, I mean, if the board wants to have a, a, a work session about it and look at it, we're happy to do that. But, I mean, you gotta define what you mean by bids, because we, we do informal bids a lot. Are you saying every informal bid we gotta bring in front of the camera?
Right.
There's just a lot of things. If you want to look at it, we're happy to look at it with you. But it doesn't need to be done in a, at a- be done in a one-shot, you know, in a meeting like this.
I agree with Matt. I think we should possibly look at everything. It's just a question of semantics, then let's talk about it. But we are responsible for taxing people. We're responsible for spending tens of millions of dollars here in Beaufort County. We should be responsible for understanding the bid process.
The concern I have is the language in the discussion is almost like we're accusing our staff and the way we've handled something in the past, and as a commissioner, I don't know of anything.
Chairman, I have a problem with you making everything personal.
Well, I mean, really, I mean.
This is business. If people got their heart wearing on their cuff, they shouldn't even be here if they're not adult enough to sit down and take the exchange back and forth. Everything is not personal.
No, I didn't. What I'm leading up to is if we've got a problem, let's be specific about on the bid process.
I got an idea. Let's make it better so we won't have a problem.
Well, I don't have any problems with that, which is what the manager said, you know, we can go back and look and see if there's anything that we can do to make the process better.
Well, then, let's have it at the next meeting. Let's talk about it at the next meeting.
I don't have any problems with that.
Okay, and if that's not going to be a Stan item, this will be the management item, we'll all give input.
Okay.
Is that a consensus?
We have a motion on.
Nobody take my second back?
Yeah, if we got a consensus, go with consensus.
No table?
No table. And that's not a table issue. Either have consensus or.
Next meeting.
Yeah, we have consensus, we have consensus. No objection.
I'll take that, we got consensus.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Okay, ma'am. Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Somebody's second.
All in favor?
Okay.